I don't even know how to get out of this. So ridiculous.
Okay, alright, we are live.
Alright, alright, well, welcome everyone to the Federal Way City Council meeting for June 16th of 2020. We have our council president Susan Honda. Susan, are you still on the line? Can you still hear us? Our council president Susan Honda has been having some, we've been having some computer issues. And so she's gonna make her way into City Hall. But I think we've got a pretty full agenda, so why don't we go ahead and get started? And then when she gets here, we'll get her all set up on the computer. With that, let's go ahead and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
To the flag
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic
And to the Republic
For which it stands
For which it stands
One nation
One nation
Under God
Under God
Indivisible
Indivisible
With liberty and justice for all
Justice for all
Alright. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, correct. Councilmember Russo?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion or an amendment to tonight's addition to tonight's meeting agenda.
Okay, and what is that motion?
I move to add under Council Business Item B, Council's Discussion and Potential Action of the Addition On to the Council's Facebook webpage that the Council supports and recognizes that Black Lives Matter.
Can I second that?
There's been a motion and a second? To add Item 7B under Council Business. Alright, is there any discussion on that? Add that agenda item? Okay, hearing night, all those in favor, all those in favor of adding the agenda item, in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. The vote is unanimous, we will add that item and discuss it later in the agenda. Alright, now we've got the, oh, thank you, Councilmember Russo. Item A, AWC Advanced Certificate and Municipal Achievement to Councilmember Assefa Dawson, Councilmember Coach Moore, and Councilmember Moore from Peter King, CEO of AWC.
Thank you, Mayor, Peter King here, appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening. I was with you a few months ago when we made this award to Council President Honda, so it's really great to be back. I might mention with, this is the first time I've had the opportunity to present three Of the Advanced Certificates at one time, and there are only Two other cities out of our 281 where there are This number of council members that have achieved this Advanced Certificate. So just a quick bit of background, the certificate program was designed and created back in 1997. It really acknowledges elected officials at the city level for Knowledge and skills to effectively operate within the law, plan for the future, secure and manage funds, And foster community and staff relationships. So, the basic program requires a completion of 30 credits of study, And the advanced, which we're talking about this evening, requires an additional 30 credits That can be done through AWC Educational or Other Courses and plus a service component. So, we have about 1,000 city officials throughout the state that have completed the Basic Certificate, And about 300 that now have the Advanced Certificate. So, all elected officials in the state are automatically enrolled. If you're interested in seeing where you stand, there's a spot on our website That you can go and take a look at how many credits you've completed. So the requirements really fall in four areas, roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements of being an elected official, Public Sector Resource Management, Community Planning and Development, That obviously falls into land use, zoning, annexation, etc., And then effective local leadership, so human resource development, community outreach. That's the basic program, and the Advanced Certificate then acknowledges a continued commitment To education and community service. So, as you mentioned, Mayor, I'm here this evening to present three awards. Councilmember Lydia Assefa Dawson, Councilmember Coach Moore, and Councilmember Martin Moore. So on behalf of the AWC Board of Directors, I do extend our sincerest congratulations to this achievement And your dedication to continued education. On behalf of your community, if I were there in person, I would be presenting you with a certificate, A handshake, a photo opportunity, and a lapel pin, but since I'm not there, I give my heartiest congratulations. And hopefully, at some point in the future, we can have an opportunity to say thank you personally. So, I would be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Peter, and congratulations to our councilmembers. Say thank you so much, yay! Councilmembers, any questions while we, Lydia, Councilmember Assefa Dawson, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would, just wanted to say thank you to Peter and AWC for the award, And as you stated, I wish we were all there in person. And just wanted to say thank you for what you, as AWC, is doing for our cities and municipalities. And so just my, I just want to take this opportunity to really show my gratitude And for all the education, the training, the conferences, the workshops that you keep offering for us to Do better at what we do. And so I just want to appreciate you for the, for being part of our journey And really serving our communities better, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your engagement, and I might mention, you know, our annual conference is next week, And it is a virtual conference, given COVID-19. It's available for all elected officials and city staff to register. There is no fee involved, and it involves 10 on-demand sessions that we're having. We're having four live sessions next week, Including a special session on a conversation about advancing race equity and leadership, Which we're planning on having on Thursday. So, if you haven't registered for that, it's an easy registration, And by registering, you also earn 10 credits for the CML program. So I encourage you all to participate if you have time. The sessions will be pre-recorded and available throughout the year.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Coach Moore, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much, Peter, really appreciate the honor. And Mayor, you might want to do some kind of a little press release that says that Three of our councilmembers, actually four, with Susan, I'm not sure if there are any more, Have achieved this recognition, and there are only 300-some statewide that have received this, And it's in honor to our city, and a thank you to AWC for doing all this work on behalf of our cities.
Absolutely, we will, I'll talk to Tyler about it. Tyler's on the, on the meeting now, and so he's here in the office, and we'll get something out. Councilmember Moore, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to, to Receive this award, and it's been a pleasure of mine to kind of work on Continuous improvements and continuing to learn of all the matters that are important. I think part of being, part of being a good elected official is, is to Understand and evolve with the community, and I think AWC has helped with that. And I'm just grateful for the work that AWC puts on year-round. And, and so just wanted to give my word of thanks as well, so.
Fantastic, great. Anybody else up on the go-to-the-order on this item?
You think we're expecting big things from Lynda?
Yeah. That's right, that's right. Yeah, I think we've got Council President Honda inbound to City Hall, and we're getting her set up. And so before that, while we're, let me ask Jerry Lynn, everybody, how we... Okay, why don't we get started? We've got, I'm gonna skip over the Juneteenth proclamation just momentarily To make best use of our time, and then once we get Council President Honda, then we'll get immediately Into the Juneteenth proclamation. Before we go, for the Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report, we're going to have a financial report from a day. Let's not do that right yet. Then we're gonna have a day then talk about the proposed 2021 to 2022 Budget calendar, and then we'll get into some other items. The high school virtual graduation that will, that's occurring on Channel 21, and we'll talk about that. And Tim Johnson, our Economic Development Director, is gonna be talking about Different ways that we're working with the school district with regard to school supplies, donation requests, And the utilization of Federal Way, of the, our Channel 21, the Federal Way TV station, On behalf of the, the school district using that to do the virtual graduation for the high schools. And I'll talk about that. We've got a Chamber of Commerce, well, we had a Chamber of Commerce quarterly meeting last week. I believe that was last Tuesday at 8:00 AM in the morning, and it was very productive. And, and then when we get done with all the other items on the emerging issues, We'll have Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter give a presentation regarding fireworks safety. Is I believe our last meeting, excuse me, our next meeting Will occur after the 4th of July. So it's, it's, can't believe it's time for that already, but this will be the pre-4th of July briefing. I see Councilmember, excuse me, Council President Honda setting up her computer, and we'll... So that's the preview of the Emerging Issues and Report. And, let's see here. All ready? Okay. And Council President Honda, welcome. I think you're still on mute.
Thank you.
There you go.
Councilmember Tran is having internet issues? Is he here?
Councilmember Tran?
He just sent me a note.
Okay. Well, okay, so let's, let's now go back to the, actually, Thomas, can you please reach out to Councilmember Tran?
He says he can't connect back to Zoom.
Okay, we're gonna work on that. And, but let's go ahead and press forward, because I know that we, I think we've got somewhat of a Busy agenda tonight, a lot of people speaking, so we'll get him on board. And perhaps when we come to it in the proclamation, you know, we'll, we'll have to have somebody else go through that. But now is the time for the proclamation, for the first-ever Juneteenth Week Honoring Freedom. June, the week of, this week, June 15th through the 19th. And all councilmembers will be reading a portion of the proclamation, And we'll have multiple individuals virtually accepting. And accepting, we'll have Frank Fields, we'll read a remarks from him, And then we're gonna have Trinise Rogers from the Diversity Commission, Lynn Idahosa Berry from the Black Collective, Tersa Idahosa from the Black Collective, Terry Rogers Kemp, a friend of mine, an attorney that we used to have cases together. She is a very, just a great defense attorney. She is the Police Accountability Co-Chair for the Seattle King County NAACP. Jesse Johnson, our State Representative, Cynthia McCallahan, and Lamont Stiles. And so that'll be, make comments for the proclamation. With that, Council President Honda, are you ready to begin?
Actually, actually, you know, I'm looking for the proclamation now, so I was all set up at home, but... Oh, thank you, without Jerry Lynn. Alright, is everybody ready?
And Councilmember Tran has now rejoined us. Okay.
Are you ready? Okay.
Yep.
Alright, Juneteenth Week. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, And with those words, our country changed, declaring the slaves in Confederate territories free, and?
Whereas this action paved the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, Which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America, and?
Whereas the freedom for many who were enslaved in the South and southwest United States Was delayed for two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation until June 19th, 1865, and?
Whereas June 19th is a meaning, is a meaning of freedom and liberation from slavery to Black Americans, Calling it Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and? Councilmember Tran, I'm sorry.
You're muted, you're muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, I have trouble connection, so I apologize.
I'll continue. Whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years, And is the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery in the United States, and?
Whereas we pay tribute to the journey and acknowledge The many roles and contributions of the African-American spirit to our community, and?
Whereas Juneteenth is the time for celebration, prayer, gathering in our Federal Way community. Whereas local organizations have the common mission to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation Of the Black history and culture, and?
All together. Whereas
Whereas From the moment forward
The Federal Way community
Is determined Is determined to join
To join
Together
To wrap each other
To wrap each other
In a spirit of love
Spirit of love
Striving
Striving
To make
Life
Life
In our community In our community
And our world
Better for all
Better for all
And whereas Whereas
Together we embrace
We embrace
The past as well as the future
As well as the future
That only unity
That only unity
Respect
Respect
And appreciation can bring And
And now, therefore, we've undersigned Mayor and City Council of the City of Federal Way, Washington, To hereby proclaim June 15th to the 21st, 2020, as Juneteenth Week in the City of Federal Way, Washington. And we celebrate the rich culture and heritage that African-Americans have brought and continue to bring to our community. And we urge all citizens to become aware of the significance of this celebration in Black history And in the heritage of our nation and city. Signed this 16th day of June, 2020. Thank you, everyone.
Alright, great job, great job, everybody. Alright, I think we've got everybody here as well. First, we've got the letter from Frank Fields, or he's our Senior Advisory Commission Representative, And he printed off a letter, and Stephanie, would you read that letter?
Yes, Mayor. The letter reads, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. I am so grateful and honored to be here tonight to receive this proclamation. I would like to add a footnote regarding the emancipation. When the slaves were freed in 1863, Texas was the last state in the Union to get the message that the slaves were freed. Unfortunately, the following year, they wanted to celebrate the anniversary but found out there was nowhere for Black people to celebrate. So in 1865, former slaves pooled together and raised $800 and purchased 10 acres of land In Houston, Texas, and named it Emancipation Park. It was the only park open to Black people until the 1950s. Jim Crow laws took effect until the 1960s Civil Rights Movement with Dr. Martin Luther King began. 1980 Juneteenth became a state holiday in Texas commemorating the Emancipation Proclamation of 1863. During the Civil Rights Movement, I was honored to march with Dr. Martin Luther King From the largest Black church in Seattle, Mount Zion, where I'd been a member of the church all my adolescent years. During the Civil Rights Movement, it sprang such programs as Model Cities Central Area Motivation Program Camp, So that Blacks could train for better jobs and be able to enroll into better schools, But most of all, for affirmative action that was put into place. I was unable during this time to work with Channel 9 Studios. I was able to, during this time, to work with Channel 9 Studios under the watchful eye of Bob Hoggopian, The producer who produced most of the shows on Channel 9 at the University of Washington campus. I later decided to enroll in the University of Washington, taking communication classes, Where I learned the art and skill of communicating, what a journey it has been from the 1960s to now. I made Federal Way my home in 1983, and at that time, the population was just under 18,000. People, now we have a population of just under 100,000 people. Through the years, I've worked on several projects for change in Federal Way. My recent project was starting the Senior Commission here in Federal Way To protect and help seniors with programs with housing, financial, and a place where they can have a voice. I came before the Mayor and City Council about three years ago, pleading to fund a seniors' commission, And I'm happy to say this summer of 2019, it came to light. And in August 2019, we picked the first commissioners, And this coming up August 2020 will be our one-year anniversary of the Senior Advisory Commission. I hope this will continue well into the future. So I thank you again for honoring me with this prestigious proclamation and acknowledgement. I'm humbled and grateful. I thank all of you that have supported me and believed in me, and I accept and share this proclamation with you all. Thank you, Black Lives Does Matter."
Alright, thank you, thank you, Frank, well said. Trinise Rogers with the Diversity Commission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi, thank you, my name is Trinise Rogers, I'm the Diversity Commissioner. I just want... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just want to thank you, Mayor Farrell, and the City Council members. It is my honor to accept the Juneteenth Proclamation on behalf of the Diversity Commission. As you may already know, Juneteenth is an extremely important day for the African-American community. During my interview process, as a commissioner, I was able to briefly share my desire to introduce Juneteenth To the seat of Federal Way. I just want to thank you on behalf of the Diversity Commission for being such a responsive, Such a culturally responsive Mayor and City Council. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Trinise, and thank you for your work on the Diversity Commission. Lynn Idahosa Berry. Oh, thank you. Next, Lynn Idahosa Berry with the Federal Way Black Collective. Lynn? Stephanie, are we working to get the?
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
She's on.
Perfect, sorry, guys, I think I hit the wrong button. Thank you so much, as we're adjusting to this cultural world, I miss walking up to the podium. Unfortunately, I didn't, I am so excited to have you guys create this proclamation, Especially in partnership with the Federal Way Black Collective. We are always grateful to see the strides that City Council makes towards truly making Federal Way an equitable place. So I want to really thank you guys for pulling together and making this happen, Making sure that the, the language was, was worked on To make sure that our community will truly enjoy this and celebrate this for years to come. And also, I also want to challenge you, this proclamation is a great stand, And having a flag is also a great stand, but policy is truly what we want. So as you're making your consideration this evening, The policy that you've put forward for this small business funding is not equitable. So truly honor this proclamation and take some more time So that we can truly set a precedent for saying that Black Lives Matter, And not just saying it, but meaning it in the City of Federal Way. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And now, Tersa Idahosa.
Mayor, I don't have her signed in.
Okay.
Lynn knows?
Lynn?
Or she might be?
Yeah, maybe Lynn knows. Lynn, are you still on?
Hi, so... She, I, let me, can I message Stephanie? Because I don't want to interrupt the meeting, can we go back to her?
Sure, of course, yeah, just tell, just let us know. Just maybe send, of course, just send an email or communicate with Stephanie. Oh, and I want to let everybody know, I've been, I've been notified that Mr. Lamont Stiles is, We're gonna move his comments from the proclamation to regular city comments.
Yes, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next, we've got my friend Terry Rogers Kemp. Terry?
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
We can, yes, thank you, Terry.
Thank you. I want to first say thank you very much to the Federal Way Black Collective And the dynamic youth leadership of that Black organization For inviting the Seattle King County NAACP to participate in this momentous occasion. I'd also like to thank the Federal Way City Council for allowing me to speak. It is a pleasure to participate in this first-ever proclamation of June 19th as Juneteenth Day. It is not surprising to me that this city is making such a forward and progressive move, Especially given the leadership of this city, and I'm grateful. This proclamation is an important step in the journey of reconciliation of the peoples in America, The City of Federal Way and Martin Luther King County To recognize, acknowledge, celebrate Black people, Especially descendants of kidnapped and enslaved people. Again, thank you for this proclamation, and also for being an inspiration To other cities and counties in Washington to take steps towards the same. Thank you also for your willingness to engage to make a better city, a better future For all of the people of Federal Way, and especially Black citizens. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Terry. Alright, our State Representative, Jesse Johnson.
Mayor, he's joined with quite two, two different ones, so let me...
Oh, oh. I think I'm okay now.
Alright.
Nice to see you all. I like, I like to see the facial hair count from the cocaine, and Tran looks good. So I want to begin with a brief poem that is the official national Juneteenth poem this year. It's called "We Rose" by Christina K. "From America's heart, we rose. Already a people, our faces we bond, our faces green. We rose. Skills of art, life, beauty, and family. Crushed by forces, we knew nothing of. We rose. Survived, we must, we did, we rose. We rose to be you, we rose to be me. Above everything expected, we rose. Become the knowledge we never knew, we rose. Dream, we did, act, we must. Uh, Juneteenth is the oldest national commemoration of the ending of, official ending of slavery, And I just want to thank my former colleagues in City Council and Mayor for this important step. It is time that we take a first step in centering Black voices and the Black experience In this country and within our local jurisdictions, and I believe this is the first of many steps to come. I support the proclamation wholeheartedly of Juneteenth, And I support the city as we proclaim that Black Lives Matter, And I also, again, push my former colleagues to continue this work In centering voices of the most marginalized in our community. Thank you for the opportunity today."
Thank you, Representative Johnson, thank you for your work on behalf of all of us. It's, it's fun to have a former member of us join us, and it's, it's a lot more fun even to, to know you're doing great work than Olympia, so thank you. Alright, our friend Cynthia McCallahan, Cynthia?
Hello, good evening, everyone. This is truly an historical moment for our city, and I'm proud to be a resident, To be on the Human Services Commission, and to be a proud citizen in this great state. And I want to thank you all for recognizing Juneteenth. This reminds me of a poem as well, by Langston Hughes, it's called "I Too Sing America." "I too sing America, I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes, But I laugh and I eat well and I grow strong. But tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes, And nobody will dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen then.' Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed, for I too am America." I just want to thank the Council for recognizing Juneteenth and what that represents in the Black community. And I'm very hopeful and grateful that you all will raise the Black Lives Matter flag on Friday as well. Thank you again for this opportunity, God bless you all, and stay safe."
Alright, thank you, Cynthia. Okay, so we're, as I said before, Mr. Stiles, Lamont Stiles, is going to be moving to Public comment after this, so those are the comments we have for the proclamation.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tress is on the line now.
Oh, great, great, Tersa?
Oh, sorry. Hi. Hi, thank you very much, I'm sorry for the lateness. I just wanted to also add my voice to saying thank you For the proclamation of Juneteenth and for recognizing and honoring The fact that we are one of the most diverse communities here in the state of Washington. And... And as being living in Federal Way, I absolutely love it and truly believe that our model is the City of Opportunity. I really believe that we have and can be that to everybody else as the world is looking on at everything that's happening around because of Black Lives Matters and George Floyd and every of the other people that we haven't named that are going through the situation, that we actually can be that change. We can be the opportunity to make those changes, and I believe that working together with the City Council and the citizens of Federal Way, that we can absolutely make that change. And I thank you for allowing us to begin to start that. So I do say thank you, and we are prepared to do the work. We're here. As I always say, that we are more alike than we are different, and I want us to continue to move forward to make this place be great for everyone that lives here. And again, thank you, and I do look forward to seeing the Black Lives Matters flag flying over our city office. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. I don't think that the... We haven't agreed to that, but I would just make sure that everybody knows that we haven't agreed to that, but I know that that's being requested. But thank you very much, Terza, I appreciate it. Oh, by the way, there is... It was requested. I wanted to make sure that we put up the schedule of events for Juneteenth week. Oh. Bill is sharing it right there. So these are the schedule of events for Juneteenth week. We wanted to make sure that we shared those, and it's got a whole list of activities and then things going on for this very historic week, and it's the first time that we've ever done a proclamation for Juneteenth in our city's history. So it comes at a very important time. Okay, thank you. And as this meeting is recorded, people can go back either with... Either on the YouTube or, you know, through our website and freeze that screen if you're looking for them for information, or just email a council member or myself, and we'll send it to you via Bill Vodino. Okay, now let's move on to the Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. First, we'll have a financial report from Adei Arulolo, as promised, once the COVID-19 situation hit, and so here we go. Adei, would you please give your presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Council. We've done... Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. This... The focus of this particular presentation will be the three proprietary funds, as I discussed last time, which would be our Dumos Bay. Okay. Okay. So it should be update on Dumos Bay, Federal Way Community Center, and Performing Heart Center. Just as a background before we get into the numbers, the estimates and projections are based on two weeks of lockdown in the month of March, and that is how I'm able to estimate what the future revenue will be. June through December, just so that to give you an idea of what our revenue shortfall or the needs will be, those are also projected spending. The numbers will be revised up or down as we know more, and I do believe that by next month, when we have the June activity, there probably will be a little bit of tweaking to some of the numbers. This is the Performing Heart Center. Currently, according to the 2020 budget, we have in the current budget to support Performing Heart Center by $800,000. So as of the end of May, we've transferred about 540 of that $800,000 to the Performing Heart Center. So the fund, based on the estimate, the closure, I do think that the fund needs $955,000 instead of $800,000. So there'll be additional $417,000 above the $539 that we've transferred. So that is a net increase of $155,000. And the spreadsheet below, this is where we are through the end of May. The total revenue so far is $276,000, and of course, we started the year at the beginning of the year with a negative $100,000. So through the end of May, we've spent in total $704,000. And of course, we've transferred, as I mentioned earlier, we've transferred $538,813, which is about $539,000 into that fund. The information that we have now, even though I'm reporting through May, because of difficulties that Performing Heart Center is having in maintaining their finance director, so they've only provided us information through the month of April. So, but that information was sent to us in May. So that is what this amount represent. So with the closure, this is what we're estimating on what their revenue projection will be, and this is the portion that Spectra will incur through our demand. Keeping in mind what is included in this is servicing the building, the utility, light, water, gas, and some of our employees are actually occupying this building to allow us to do social distancing, and specifically, there are two finance department employees that are there, and HR is there, and a couple of other departments. This portion down here is the portion of the city's employee that is serving as liaison between the city and Spectra. Also, this amount includes the internal service charges. That is providing them with IT support, providing them, you know, computer and the internet and all of that, and other internal service charges. So this is the city's incurred cost. This is the amount that Spectra will incur. Based on this estimate, I'm estimating that they would need additional $155,000 on top of the current budgeted $800,000. This is Dumos Bay Center. Again, for Dumos Bay Center, we've funded them $23,000, and we paid that through the end of May. Based on the closure, even though Dumos Bay, as always, actually, out of all the three facilities, has always performed very well, but because of the total closure, we cannot do any service in there. So they would need additional... They would need a total funding of $283 throughout the end of the year. So that is $260,000 more than the current budget allocation. And again, because Dumos Bay, as I mentioned two weeks ago, for all of our facilities, in order to make sure we do not have people finalizing them, we need to have somebody there to keep an eye on the property, even though it is not open for business. So the $185,000 is what we spend in salary through the end of May, and about $158,000 is what we spend in supplies and services. And what you have from June through December are pretty much the estimate that we think will be required for the rest of the year, and what you have above is also what we project their revenue will be. The three facilities are unique in the sense that after the closure and the stay home is lifted, people will not just rush to this building. I think it will take a while for the clientele to be built up again. It will take a while for people to get comfortable to go, and that is part of why you see the revenue gradually growing in those areas. So I'm expecting that they would need additional $260,000 for the rest of the year. Federal Way Community Center, from the general fund, we've funded them $312,000. And as of now, the fund will need about $884,000. $312,000 is the total budget. So as I've shown both Dumos Bay and Federal Way Community Center, we've pretty much have funded them what is in the current budget. So in order for Federal Way Community Center to be able to support whatever it is that they need to do throughout the year, they would need additional support of $572,000. Just like the Performing Heart Center and Dumos Bay, we cannot just lock this building and walk away without people finalizing it. So we maintain, and we're maintaining, a reasonable amount of staff in there. Our Federal Way Community Center requires $1,500,000 as a required fund balance. So that is part of what they've been able to use to support themselves. At the beginning of this year, they spent part of that. So at the beginning of this year, instead of having that 1.5, they had 1.2. And through the end of May, they've earned a revenue of $375,000, and they've spent $715,000. And remember, the COVID-19 started in the month of March, and that is part of what have an impact on the revenue and, of course, the expenditure growth. If we... If the mayor did not decide to reduce the staffing in all of these three facilities, the cost will have been much higher than this. So with that reduced staff and gradually building the staff back up, that is what we have in here. And also, again, as I mentioned earlier, the revenue is gradually coming back up. It's not going to be flipping the switch, where everything will go back to normal. I think even when they're able to open up, as some of the restaurants are feeling now, 25% occupancy, 50% occupancy, or whatever the occupancy rate is, and for the citizens to feel comfortable. So even if you say 50% occupancy, if the citizens are now feeling comfortable to go there, you may not meet their 50% capacity. So that is what this revenue projection is based on, and that is what some of the spending. Utility, water and soil, I mean, we need to maintain heat in the building. Yes, the water panel will be low if there's nobody there using it, but nonetheless, that is what we project the spending to be. So by the end of the year, we're projecting about $572,000. Again, all of these estimates are based on what happened in March, and when we get the information in June and we're able to see how we're doing, it is possible some of this revenue projection and some of the spending will be adjusted accordingly. So looking at the total impact on the city, I'm projecting from the self-start utility tax prop one red light that I shared with you two weeks ago, we are projecting revenue shortfall of $4.6 million. Now, for the three entities that I just shared with you, I'm saying well, Performing Heart Center, we need to add additional $155,000, Dumos Bay Center, $260,000, Federal Way Community Center, $571,000, so another $988,000, so that's .99 million for the proprietary fund. Yes, I still do believe we're faring better than most communities because of some of these things that we have in place. We have savings from being in the score, $2.1 million, and we have the carryover from our last year, more than a million dollars. We also have the fund balance, the reserve that I said was meant for some of these things. So those are the things that if these numbers become what we will have to deal with, that is what we see us through 2020. So even though, again, as I have shared with you, I do strongly believe that in 2020, we will fare better than most cities because of some of those things that we've put in place. And you will see when we bring the budget amendment for 2024, some of these items will be addressed. Will things be tight? Will we spend down some of the reserve, especially like in Dumos Bay, like Federal Way Community Center? We may end up spending down, but again, based on your current policy, it must be with the approval of the Council, and I think unless you change that policy, if we were to spend down any of the reserve fund balance, we have three years to make it up. And that is my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Okay, we've got some questions here. Councilmember Sephardasen?
No, I'm good. I don't have a question, sorry.
Okay, I see hands up. So if you don't want to ask, if people have hands up, if you could put them down. Councilmember Coach Mark? Oh, we need your microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're telling us, Adei, that we're basically, we have $4 million to cover some of the shortfall, but it looks like we have a $5.6 million shortfall, so... And it may be more than that because we don't know in the ensuing months what will happen. And so how... We don't get to print money, so how are we going to handle... You're telling me we're going to spend some of our reserves for each building to help cover it? And then you're saying that we're going to be able to pay that back within a three-year period?
What I'm saying is, according to the current policy that we have in place, if we were to spend any of the fund balance down below the required amount, the policy, your policy says we must make it up within three years. So it is Council's fund balance policy, so, but yes, we have to make it up unless we change our policy.
Well, all I'm trying to get at is, we still have six more months in the year to go. We don't know whether we'll have a second wave coming. Not sure what's going to happen. At some point, are we going to have to in two or three months make another decision? Because I'm not sure where we're going. At least we don't have a huge shortfall like $10 million that other cities have, because we don't... We didn't spend recklessly. But, you know, I am worried about, you know, where we're heading, and so just, please stay on top of it every month. Let us know what the Finance Committee reports exactly where we're heading.
Actually, I think that is one of the beautiful thing that Mayor has said to the Council, that we will be bringing updated information to the Council at every Council meeting. So I think as we go along on this journey, the Council and the Mayor will be in tow, I think, and... And when we start seeing some of these numbers, whichever way they're going, I think the council will be informed and whatever changes that needs to be made will have to be made. But I think that is one of the, the decision that mayor made is that we will be making this presentation at every council meeting so that you can be aware of where we are. And I do feel that next month, sorry, next month, when we have the information on June, based on the national analysis of the economy. And I was actually telling the mayor and the management team on Monday, our restaurants are opening up. And I took my family to Olive Garden on Monday and we sat in the parking lot for more than one hour. Because they cannot take in the number of people waiting, but a lot of people are dying to get out. They are dying to get out and start spending the money. What the national economy also indicates as actually for the month of May, there's an increase in sales activity by more than 10%. So those are the things that I'm hoping they will stay true for us. Yes, again, I also share with you, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I know that there's an increase nationwide in retail sales which wasn't expected. So that's pretty interesting. I think it was like eighteen percent increase nationwide. But, you know, Aday, well, mayor really, wondering, you know, the buildings are going to be sitting empty unless we start filling them. I'm wondering if we shouldn't be contacting the school district because the, the schools are going to be opening up in the fall and they're going to have to have some social distancing and maybe we can be working with them about using some of our buildings in a way of leasing them.
Okay. Well, yeah, let's see where we're, I know that King County is applying for phase two, which means three weeks, approximately three weeks later, then we'll move into phase, phase three. And, and then I think once phase three is open, then our facilities can open. So, but it's a good suggestion and we'll incorporate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how we can get those buildings filled up somehow. Okay, thank you.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you very much. Council President Honda.
Hello. Thank you, Aday, for the presentation. What impact, if any, will the loss of revenue from Celebration Park and any other rentals that we might have of our parks beyond the budget?
The loss in revenue on those facilities are part of what I'm showing in here that because their revenue is decreasing, the general fund will have to step up and cover them. Unfortunately, if we, for us to talk in larger terms, that is not the only impact on the community. When people are coming to those facilities, they're picking, they're buying lunch at McDonald's, you know, Burger King, whatever, those businesses are also suffering. And because those businesses are suffering, the sales tax revenue is also affected. And because some of those facilities are closed, the utility tax, and I think this is a part of what I shared with you last time, utility tax because they don't have the lights on, because they set the temperature for some of this building at the Saturday night. So it's one of those ripple effect. You know, even though I want to make sure this, the council fully understand this, even though I do believe we may do okay in 2020, 2021 budget will be challenging. And I want, you know, just right off the back, I want you to understand that. We may survive, I think we will do fine 2020, but 2021 will be challenging. Why do I believe that? Right off the back, some of the things that the council and the city has done, we signed union contract, we started adjustment. So if we were to have zero, where even in 2020, our expenses will go up automatically in 2021. So without even, well, what, don't increase your supplies or don't increase whatever, automatically, our salary costs will go up. And if this thing keep going like this, I can see the state increasing retirement contribution from the city. So some of those, and that is, you know, I think, I do think we will survive 2020 okay, but 2021, that is, that is what is keeping me, me up at night.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Aday, for your presentation. I have a questions on the projected revenue for the three buildings. On your slideshow, you show that the, I believe, projected revenue started in May and it's go all the way to December. I just want to know, with that projection, how is that compared to our normal revenue? At what percentage?
Oh, actually, the projected revenue is, pardon my language, is way in the toilet. You know, because compared to what we usually get, a good example is Dumas Bay. Here is a clue, we budgeted to support Dumas Bay by twenty-three thousand dollars for the entire year. So which day will have been fine? Now I'm saying, whoa, we're going to need, Dumas Bay will need two hundred and sixty thousand. That is to tell you how far off they are. And that is after the mayor has reduced staff. You know, yes, we cannot turn off the heat totally without damaging the property. We cannot board the building without the property being finalized. We have bare minimum staff. So to answer your, your question, it's probably twenty-five percent.
May I, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Facility like Performing Heart Center, you know, is totally shut down. So for the month of April, May, zero, nine, zero revenue. Now, what you see in the projections, okay, if we're able to move into the fifty percent occupancy or as the mayor said, phase two, that is what we think the revenue will be. But even if you were to open the building tomorrow and the law say we can have fifty percent occupancy, it depends, will the citizens flock to the building? So it may not.
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Of course.
Thank you. I know that mayor took some action to reduce the staffing expenditure for, you know, multiple building. But I was just wondering, is there anything else that we could do from now until December to even, you know, reduce the expenditure?
We'll continue to look at that and Aday and I will, we are in constant communication. We were talking before this meeting, we'll talk after this, we'll, we'll take a look at some possibilities. So it's a, it's a good idea. If we can, you're welcome. If we can knock down some, you know, low hanging fruit and find savings in particular locations, we will. Okay. Okay, now let's move on to the projected calendar for budget discussions. Aday?
Would you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is the, the calendar that we would use to start putting the budget for 21, 22 together. As I just mentioned in the last presentation, what is actually keeping me up late at night is this budget. So dealing with 2020, I do believe, and so far, we are just in June, it is looking okay. But this is what, what is challenging to me. Some of these items include so many other things, what the mayor will do, what the directors will do, but the activity of the council actually starts in September and that is pretty much based on the law. You can add more days if you want to have more hearing days or more discussion day, but this is part of what I have worked out with the mayor. I'm saying on September fifteenth, the mayor will present its budget to you. So, and that will be at the regular council meeting of September fifteenth. So the, the, the next one for the council is to use September twenty-three through twenty-four, which is Wednesday and Thursday following the second meeting in September to be able to do more discussion. So then in October, October sixth, we'll do budget study session and overview of a department presentation. You know, that will be a special meeting because it's starting at five. Then on the October twentieth, we will have a special meeting at five again to do the revenue and expenditure projection and do a portion of department presentation. At six thirty, during the regular meeting, you know, we will also do part of public hearing and council deliberation. On twenty-first, so we're doing both October twenty and October twenty-first. So October twenty, that is Tuesday and October twenty-first, that is Wednesday. So we're doing that back to back. And then on twenty-seventh, we are having another meeting, which would be based on the biennial budget. And that goes all the way to November. Continue council deliberation on November, there will be a special council, special time. Then we continue at the regular meeting, which will do the introduction of the ordinance. And hopefully, we do the enactment of their ordinance on November seventeenth. So the council can add more days if you think we need deliberation or based on what we've done in the past, or some of these may be reduced. We put more time in there to make sure the council has enough time. If we don't need it, we won't use it. But it is important, I think, what we've done in the past to make sure this timeframe will work for all of the council. And if we need to add other more dates, we can do that. Okay.
Council, any questions? Okay. And this is just for information purposes. Okay, thank you, Aday. Appreciate it. All right, now let's move on to high school virtual graduation, school supply donation request and Federal Way Channel twenty-one. Thomas, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you explain to the group what we're doing with regard to our coordination and partnership with the school district with regard to high school graduations?
Yeah, sure thing. So Tyler and me, as along with school representatives, mainly Cassie and Whitney, have been putting together a timeline that would mirror what they were trying to do with their virtual graduations. They were airing them on YouTube and I believe Facebook, and they wanted to leverage our Channel twenty-one asset as well. And so they had previously recorded graduations, a series of them, one for each one of their high schools and other programs that they have. And they, with some, with some filler content, some one minute like senior, senior spotlight videos. And we had arranged a nice timeline. And that is, is put together so that is airing starting last Saturday and every subsequent Saturday for the month of June on, on Channel twenty-one. So it's got a couple of intro messages by the mayor, one, one about clean water at Dumas Bay and then the, the other one kind of congratulating the seniors on their graduation. And that's kind of how the program starts. And then it transitions into the, the products that, that the school district has developed. That pretty much capture, capture the essence, Mayor?
Very good. That's it. Okay, and thank you. Tim Johnson, can you tell us a little bit about what we're doing with regard to school supply donation and, and other coordination with the school district?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, council president. A week or so back, I had a delightful conversation initiated with the superintendent, Federal Way Schools, Tammy Campbell. I congratulated her and extended my congratulations to her and her team in trying to get the class of 2020 graduated. She was very humorous in her response going, I'm not done yet. So that was a week ago, so she's still, still pursuing that effort. However, in that productive conversation, we, I asked several questions about how the city could help and assist the school district moving forward. Within that, she asked if during the course of the summer, if they could not use Channel twenty-one for educational training and lecture programs by teachers to help continue outreach and education during the summer months for a Federal Way School students. Additionally, she asked if there was any way that we could help identify sources of funding, donations for school supplies, school lunches. And then in addition to that, she had asked a question relative to deployment of more hotspots for remote work and education by our students. They had acquired, and I will defer to Thomas here in a moment, but I believe my numbers are correct, that they had over nine hundred devices that they could set up for hotspots. They deployed upwards to seven hundred. However, her staff has found that they're not using all of those, so they're going back and in a review to ascertain why. But in the meantime, that might be something we could help with. And then as a component of helping all the students is looking at, and during this period of time, employment opportunities for students. And I reached out to our King County Seattle Employment Program and they have been just absolutely genuine in their response to help us find a variety of employment opportunities for students. So we'll be getting to work with the school district to get those posted and get employers and students tied to one another. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. A lot of collaboration in cooperation with the school district and we're all working together for the, essentially the same people. And they've got twenty-one thousand students that they're working with and for and, and over three thousand staff members. So glad to see all that level of coordination. Thank you very much, Tim. Great work and, and also Thomas and the entire team. Okay, now COVID nineteen update with emergency manager Ray Gross. Right?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, council members. I'll be giving you hopefully a brief update on COVID nineteen. Can everybody see that? Yep. Okay. So before I get into it, I'd like to thank Parks Director John Hutton and the Parks Community Center staff for helping with the National Guard sheltering a week or so ago. Parks always goes a hundred and ten percent above what is expected and that was noticed by the National Guard and they gave us a very nice thank you. And I provided their commanding officer a very quick after action report. their commanding officer a, a very quick after-action report on just comments that I've heard, uh, from ourselves, city departments, and, uh, other cities. Uh, with that, I'm gonna get into the presentation. Uh, if y'all have been watching the news, there's about twenty-two states that are experiencing, I'd say, pretty significant increases in, uh, new cases, so they hope that the summer would suppress COVID nineteen. It's not playing out. Uh, the virus seems to be initially, uh, resistant to heat and humidity, where, uh, the medical professionals were hoping that it would act similar to the flu and be suppressed during the summer, so we're not getting, uh, the large amount of downtime that was expected, at least initially. As far as Washington State overall, uh, the numbers are going in a good direction. Uh, haven't seen any significant concerns as far as, uh, from the protest potentially causing a, another spike in new cases. So, looks like the slow and steady approach is proving to be the, the appropriate course. As far as King County, uh, they did send in a application to move on to phase two. They sent that in, I believe, late Monday afternoon. So, ba- best-case scenario is we hear something Thursday or Friday allowing us to move on to phase two, and if that is the case, uh, unless something else alters it, uh, the twenty-one days puts us around June or July eleventh, July thirteenth, as far as moving on to phase three. Uh, some of the King County numbers, uh, according to their website, not their application, uh, there's a discrepancy between the two. The website shows King County not meeting three targets, two in testing and two in the, uh, number of, uh, cases. They call outbreak growing. On the application, uh, they had us, uh, just missing one, and they've had some additional indicators in it, added to the application. But overall, I'd say King County, uh, compared to probably mid-April, uh, is doing much better. Uh, Eastern Washington is kind of developing the hotspots for this state presently. As far as City of Federal Way, uh, I want to say the last week or so, they've been doing some data scrubbing, so they've reduced the number of deaths and some of the number of cases that were attributed to Federal Way. As well as last week, uh, they did a significant, uh, COVID nineteen testing. I want to say they did about six thousand tests here in Federal Way, and we haven't seen a significant spike attributed to that. And overall, King County last week tested about twenty thousand people, so that's moving along nicely. Uh, and some of the other things, every Thursday, we meet with our partner agencies, so St. Francis, the school district, uh, Lake Haven, and South King Fire. We also have Public Works, and, uh, the police department attend those Thursday meetings, and we just get an update from each of the agencies, and all of them seem to be returning mostly to normal operations. Uh, getting an update from St. Francis is valuable, so we, we hear that their bed spaces are adequate. Uh, there's a good percentage of them, uh, available on a daily basis. All the agencies, including city departments, are working on, uh, personal protective equipment for their staff. Uh, South King Fire has found some high-quality reusable masks, so they're looking at getting those, so if there is a second wave, uh, they don't run into the supply crunch. And St. Francis still has, uh, COVID nineteen positive patients, but at a lower number, and, uh, and they're also allowing other services, and they've worked out how to keep the two separate. Uh, some of the things that emergency management is doing, and this was brought up in my last presentation, is about the resupply of, uh, personal protective equipment. So, in addition to mask, which, uh, I have a pretty substantial cache now, uh, also going to be purchasing, uh, safety goggles, uh, nitrile gloves, and when N ninety-five mask hit a good price point, I'll continue to buy those, because I'm just getting a feeling this is gonna be a, uh, two-to-three-year, uh, event. Uh, some of the things that city departments are doing as far as reopening, uh, there's a subcommittee formed by, uh, various city departments and staff. They're working on a safety plan for, it's one of the reopening requirements. Uh, facilities via Parks has looked into some kind of temperature-taking machine, so it's a no-touch, I believe, takes your temperature and logs it in. Uh, I think there's gonna be several for City Hall, and then one for each of the other facilities, something like that. Uh, each department is still looking at acquiring personal protective equipment, and also there's another device, a room cleaner device, that was demonstrated sometime last week or so, and looks like that's gonna, uh, help during the, the time that there's not, uh, city janitorial service. Uh, they'll be able to use that as, and, uh, at a much faster rate of cleaning a room. And then the last item on this slide is the FEMA reimbursement. After discussions with the finance director and economic development director, uh, it looks like CARES will be our, the city's primary, uh, means of being reversed for COVID expenses, and, uh, the FEMA reimbursement possibility will be there, but that's not, uh, gonna be our first priority. The main reason being CARES reimbursed at a hundred percent, so a dollar for taller, whereas FEMA reimbursed at seventy-five cents per dollar. And lastly, just some of the updates, uh, continuing to work with King County, working, looking at worst-case scenarios, uh, particularly with the known vulnerable groups, and if we have a second wave that goes more like the nineteen-eighteen flu, where the second wave came back extremely, uh, vigilant as far as, uh, lethality. So, if we have that scenario, uh, King County, King County Public Health, emergency management, also working with St. Francis on this, is just what would that worst-case scenario look like, and how, how would we work with that? Uh, also looking at, uh, working with St. Francis, and maybe have a potential tabletop exercise or two. Uh, we might fork that out into like an operational tabletop, as well as a policy-level tabletop. Uh, this is very initial discussion, don't know if it'll happen, it depends on time and, and what's happening in real life. So, that's, uh, pretty much my wrap-up for, for the update. I'll take any questions or hand it over to the mayor?
Okay, and let me give, uh, a little bit of, uh, background as well, uh, if we could just restore the screen now. Um, want to let everybody know that we get, uh, daily numbers from King County, and, and we look them up and provide them to council, as you know. Um, the most recent update was that because of the recalibration, or what they refer to as the scrubbing of the numbers, um, our numbers were reduced in regard to total positive numbers of Federal Way was reduced by thirteen, um, uh, today to bring us, uh, and then, uh, we had, uh, nine deaths attributed in Federal Way. If taken, uh, one of those, um, were attributed to that elsewhere. So, for the City of Federal Way, uh, we have a total of eight deaths and five hundred and forty-eight positive tests. So, that's, that's where we stand. I wanted to let everybody know that we have been conducting a Greater Federal Way Emergency Operations Center, uh, meetings, uh, with the local entities, um, every week, um, and checking in with each other, and, uh, following management team every Monday, uh, we're, uh, still conducting the, um, outbreak advisory team, uh, internal meetings. So, um, does anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay, uh, council member Sepha Dawson?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, um, uh, Roy, Roy, for the presentation. My question is, on your, um, slide, you show that, um, we're still trying to be cautious of people coming from China, but it's my understanding that it's in Latin America now that COVID nineteen is becoming rampant, so why are we still focusing on China? And then my other question is, if you test negative or positive for COVID nineteen, um, since there's false, um, um, negative or positive, um, what is it called? Response? Is it recommended that, um, you take, you do another test, um, to get an accurate reading, or is one test sufficient for someone to believe one way or the other?
Ray?
Hey, so, the first question concerning, uh, China and/or Latin America. As far as I know, the travel bans are still in place, and I believe President Trump, uh, just extended the, uh, Canada and Mexico, uh, screenings. So, in Latin America, as well as South America, if there's not already a travel ban, or probably will be as they're entering into the summer season, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's the, as far as I know, there hasn't been any, uh, removal of travel bans.
Oh, no. Um, sorry, I was just saying, in your, in your slide presentation, I saw, uh, travel, um, to be cautious, I think, of China, people coming in from China, I think, is one, um, that you listed, and I was just saying, I'm sorry, I didn't mean Latin America, by the way, it's Central America, but, um, just wanted to check on the, um, relevancy or how current that information is. That's all. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then as to the, uh, uh, one test versus any other tests?
So, on the test, uh, there's, and this is coming from Dr. Burks herself, there's about a fifty percent false positive rate, uh, on the test. So, I mean, I, I'm not a doctor, but, uh, if you're...
But you probably want on TV.
Yes. Uh, it's, it would never hurt to get retested. I know that's what the, uh, various long-term care facilities do, is they test not every other day, but every, so they test, wait two days, and then test again. So, that's, that would be, uh, the recommendation I would take is follow that pattern.
And we would also encourage people to talk to their med, to their healthcare providers.
Absolutely.
I think that's actually what Ray was, was saying before I, before I quipped off a one-liner. Um, I, I think it's, it's important that, that the, the healthcare providers are doing the, conducting the tests and doing the tests, and we, we should have people rely on, on that medical expertise. All right, um, okay, and, uh, council president Honda?
Thank you. At the SCA webinar, which I think was yesterday, or, yeah, that was, yesterday was Monday, someone from King County mentioned that there were free masks that they were giving out to cities, so we might want to ask for those. I don't think they're just gonna give them to us unless we ask for them. That was what I heard. And, um, at the Board of Health meeting yesterday, it was interesting to note that of the testing that we're hearing about, we're not actually hearing about all the testing. They're not, they don't get all of the numbers of private doctors and, and, um, some of the places that are doing testing, so we're doing more testing than, than the numbers indicate. Uh, on Sunday, we had a free testing event in Federal Way. Does anyone know how many folks were tested at that event? It was at C Mar?
Yeah, uh, I heard between the two, they had, uh, I believe it's also in Kent, between the two, there are about six thousand between us and Kent. I don't know the exact number.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number that were tested in Federal Way, but between the two is around six thousand.
There were quite, uh, cars all over the place. Um, it, we went there about an hour after it started, just to see what it looked like, and cars were everywhere. It was, uh, pretty, pretty busy. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council member Copeng?
I just wanted to respond to, uh, a council member Sepha Dawson's question on China, and it's relevant as far as travel ban is concerned. They're actually experiencing a pretty widespread second wave there, as been widely reported in different news sources, so I think there's still some relevance. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, thanks, Ray. Um, let's move on to the fireworks safety reminder. Uh, deputy chief Cal Sumter?
There, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Trying to show the screen. All right. As in previous years, the main message is very simply that all fireworks in Federal Way for personal use are illegal. My slide is not advancing, I don't know what's happening here. We tested it earlier and it was working fine. Thomas, can you advance the slide?
I wish I could. You've got, uh, you've got control. Uh, try stopping your sharing and, and share it again.
Okay, well, I'm pushing the button, nothing's happening.
You know what? We got gremlins this meeting.
Yeah, we do. Why don't I just briefly...
You should be able to start, start share again.
Okay.
Let's try it. And if that doesn't work, I'll queue it up right now.
Your screen, share. Yeah, not advancing.
Okay, standby. Oh, I'm queuing it up right now, I'll, uh, I'll run it for you.
I saw your slides, you were very good.
All right, fantastic. While this is coming up, you will see very shortly a picture of the city council. I downloaded that off the council webpage today, and you'll see Mr. Russo is not present in that picture, because he was appointed as a council member shortly after that picture was taken, and then COVID, right there, that picture, COVID came along, and they can't stand that close to each other for a picture right now, and so, once that gets worked out, he will join the group there in the picture. All right. I can't back it up. The, the most important slide is the second one, Thomas.
All right, just, uh, give me, give me a, give you, uh, audible cue, uh, and I will advance or, or back up the slides.
Good old-fashioned way. I will say ding. All right? This is a reminder, the, uh, the law in Federal Way is very easy, very simple for everybody to remember. It is not complex, it is not complicated by certain days, times, and, and types. All personal use fireworks are illegal within the city limits of Federal Way. We want everybody to remember that this is not a police initiative, we are part of this initiative, which comes from the people. This was made, all fireworks in Federal Way was made illegal by the city council soon after the city was incorporated, and the police department has been a part, a, a partner in that ever since the Federal Way Police Department formed. Ding! Kinda goofy. Four main reasons why fireworks are illegal in Federal Way. Go ahead and bring them all up, Thomas. Click four times. The noise problem, the air pollution, the ground pollution that's left behind, and then the two most important are injuries and fires. Every year, lots of people end up going to the emergency room with injuries, and every year, our fire department is busy on that day. Here are several other cities you can see that also have a total ban. Federal Way is not alone, because of the same reasons, injury reduction and fire prevention. Go ahead. Now, we know that this tradition is very strongly held in America, and police enforcement alone will not change it. Everybody must engage, and here's a prime example of a, one of our partners that engage in this every year. Go ahead. You see that the school district does not allow fireworks on their properties, and, next one, we invite everybody to do the same. We can make much more progress if we have all homeowners associations and multifamily housing properties join in this together, and it's for the safety of their residents. All four of those reasons apply to the people who live there. Advance. There's the Federal Way City Code, you can see the parts I've highlighted there in the middle, first violation is a fine of $300, more on that later, but the very bottom, which I bolded and highlighted, it says, "Any firework that is done in a reckless manner that causes damage to the property of another person is guilty of a gross misdemeanor." That means it is an arrestable offense. We don't want to be in the arrest business, especially for fireworks. So our number one goal every year is voluntary compliance, and that is the way that we can reduce the number of police contacts with our citizens over fireworks. Therefore, here are some of the prevention efforts we take every year, and we've already posted on our Facebook page for the year, but in a few days, you'll see a press release go out, and you'll see more of the media that we control, our Twitter and Safe Cities and so forth, we'll generate more, and at the bottom there, you see email information to the police department regarding chronic violating neighbors. More on that here in about 30 seconds, go ahead. And when these prevention efforts don't work, we will have extra patrols out during the days surrounding July 4th, and when we catch somebody violating the law, we will issue a $300 ticket and confiscate the fireworks. We would sure like to avoid that by the number one goal of voluntary compliance. So regarding that, one of the prevention methods of making some police contacts with chronic violators in advance, anybody watching this message is invited to send me an email, there is my email address right there, kyles@cityoffederalway.com, send me an email prior to July 2nd, and on July 3rd, I will have friendly officers assigned to this initiative, knock on doors, ring doorbells, and ask for voluntary compliance, so that we don't have to go out there on July 4th and take sparklers away from little kids. And for any fireworks that are in progress, we ask you to call this number right here, this is our non-emergency police dispatch number, 253-835-2121. Advance, I think that's it. Yeah, okay, you can exit out of there for me. That's all I have prepared, I'll entertain any, if you have any, same message as the last few years.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Copeng.
You're on mute.
All right.
There we go.
Kyle, thank you for the presentation. Wasn't quite as lively as last year, but that's okay, we had some gremlins, but definitely appreciate your attention to this matter, I think it's really important for our community, and I appreciate the positive approach you have to this, thank you.
Certainly.
Council President Honda.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Kyle, for the report. This year, because we're not having the Red, White &amp; Blue Festival, I am concerned that we will have more of our citizens using fireworks in their homes and in their neighborhoods, and, um, I've already heard some on the BPA trail this last week. Uh, the, I would tell you that the grasses are really tall back there on the BPA, BPA trail, and, um, if the city has any responsibility back there, it would be great to, sometime before the 4th, to get back there and cut some of that stuff down so that we don't have a fire. Um, I'm also concerned that we're going to have a lot of missing animals with the increased use of fireworks. I, I just don't see us not having a lot more people using fireworks in their home, in their neighborhoods this, this summer because of, um, not having our festival. So will you have a fair amount of officers on duty the week, weekend of 4th of July?
Yep, we already have it planned out, we will have extra officers assigned specifically to this enforcement effort. And as I said, you know, the community right now nationwide is looking for ways to reduce police contacts with the people. Well, here's a really good way, comply with the law, and we won't be in your business on a beautiful American holiday. It's that simple.
Yep.
All right, stay safe, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, and, um, Councilmember Sephardosson.
Yeah, um, thank you for the presentation, Kyle. Uh, my question is, uh, we've had this conversation, are we gonna show last year's maybe fireworks on Channel 21?
Uh, we could, um, it's, it's a good idea. Uh, Thomas, let's talk about this, uh, um, tomorrow morning, okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you, great idea, thank you, Lydia. There's a lot of stuff going on, but it's a, a good idea is a good idea, so thank you. Um, okay, and, uh, Councilmember Bruso.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, hi, Kyle, thanks for the presentation, and thanks for, uh, especially on the fire part, sorry. Uh, question, because I know it comes up a lot of times, so, um, do the folks have to be caught doing it before they can be cited, or how's that work? When you call a number?
Well, typically, yes. Typically, a police officer needs to witness some element of the violation, because we've got a misdemeanor presence rule, which generally means in the state of Washington, if it's not an exception to the rule, a police officer has to be present when it occurs. Now, there are some ways around that, it gets very complicated, and I'm not sure it would be worth the effort to prosecute, but if a neighbor, a very enthusiastic neighbor, took video of their violating neighbor and signed a statement that says, "That's my neighbor, his name is Kyle Sumter, and I've known him for five years, and I know for sure that's him doing the violation," that would give us probable cause, and we could probably issue a citation that way.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, because I know that, that always comes up sometimes, people ask why you called it, what's going on, now they're gone.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just a question, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, now, let's move on to the, that concludes, uh, the Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. Now, we're into Item D, Council Committee Reports. Uh, first is Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety Committee, uh, Councilmember Coach Mar.
I don't have anything to report, um, we, we are, our next meeting is going to be, what is our next meeting? Well, you know what? I had it out here, and I was ready for it, and I don't have it with me, but our next meeting will be in July, so, ah, here it is.
July 14th.
At 5 o'clock, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Land Use Transportation Committee, LUTC, Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you, Mayor, um, we've got a few items on the consent agenda tonight that were, uh, approved by the, uh, Land Use Transportation Committee, um, so look forward to getting a vote on those, but our next meeting is July 6th, and in, in addition to the normal um, necess, and necessary business that needs to be conducted by the, by the, this committee, we're also going to be discussing, uh, airport issues again for the first time in a few months, and, uh, also get an update on Sound Transit, specifically the Federal Way link. So, um, definitely look forward to hearing those. Uh, I know there's any citizens that are interested, and I know there's fellow council members that would like to hear, um, a little bit more about what's going on, both, both of the airport issues and, uh, Sound Transit, so, um, look forward to, uh, uh, having a little bit more of an expanded discussion on this next, uh, meeting. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, uh, now, we've got Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor, um, our next meeting is, uh, on June 23rd, 2020, at 5 o'clock, and probably on Zoom again. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, we've got Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, uh, Councilmember Sephardosson.
Yes, Mayor, um, Washington State University continues that work, um, their work on examining ways to enhance, and more importantly, help, help us understand how to return, um, the accommodation and tourism sectors. And then, as the, um, as of the end of last week, the city is waiting for the contractors to get the, um, the executive, the contract back to us to begin the construction of the digital science on, um, 3/48th and 16th, and our next meeting is going to be moved to the third week, uh, in July, um, because of the holidays and stuff, and so I believe that's going to be July 15th, and hopefully by then, City Hall would be open, um, otherwise it'll be a Zoom meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Very good, all right, thank you very much. All right, now, the Regional, um, uh, Public Issues Committee, the PIC, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, the next meeting is going to be on July 8th at, uh, 6 o'clock and 7:00 PM, um, and really, I, I think, I mean, we've talked about the King County rate and fees, uh, we've, uh, took action on a lot set of priorities, um, and, uh, I think the other major, uh, set of news is just kind of, uh, hearing what other cities are doing, um, uh, in terms of, uh, their reaction to, uh, the latest activities, uh, with Black Lives Matter. So, a lot of cities are, uh, uh, discussing that, and, uh, a lot of things are happening throughout the county. So with that, um, very simple report, uh, I will end it right there, thanks.
All right, great, Council, uh, Council President Honda.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Councilmembers Coach Mar, Estefad Dawson, and more on achieving your Advanced Certificate of Municipal Achievement. That's, um, quite an honor, and represents hours and hours of work in classrooms and presentations, so you should be, um, very happy, and I'm very proud of you, congratulations. I attended a Board of Health meeting last week, it was our first meeting since February, and, uh, we passed a motion allowing us to meet remotely. We met yesterday to review the application to advance to Phase 2 of, uh, the four phases for COVID, and, um, I did ask at that meeting if King County would, if the King County Board of Health staff would consider dividing King County into regions, as we've talked about. Um, Councilmember Lambert also had some questions regarding her area of King County with very low people who've been affected by COVID-19, and, uh, staff there was not willing to do that, they didn't think that that would work, so we will, we'll, we'll all be together as a county. Uh, we are meeting again on Thursday, and we will be discussing a resolution that will declare racism as a public health crisis. As soon as I get a copy of the resolution, I will, um, have it sent out to all of you so you could read it, and give me any feedback you might have on that. Um, on, last week, I had a discussion with Deanna Dawson about Black Lives Matter and what other cities have been doing. I did attend the PIC meeting and, and heard what the cities were doing, but I wanted to talk to her about our city, and especially about our Facebook page, and what I found out from, uh, Deanna was that we are one of the very few cities, as a city council, that has a Facebook page. So that's great for us, I think that we're on the, uh, other cities may soon follow. Uh, but I have been reviewing our council rules in regard to our Facebook page, and have talked to some council members, and we don't actually have a policy, we have some rules as to what can go on and, on the Facebook page, but we don't have a policy, and I think we, um, to really use that Facebook page to the full benefit that we can, I would like to have a policy, and so I'd like to start an ad hoc council committee to set up a policy for Facebook, and if you're interested in serving on that, let me know, we can have three council members, and, um, the other cities that Deanna was able to find that had, their city council had Facebook pages for Seattle, and they're not using it, uh, they haven't posted since February, and Spokane. So, um, I, I think if we can get a really good policy, we can help other cities develop their Facebook pages, because I think it's a good use, it's a good tool to, to reach out to our community. Today, I attended the Combined Transportation Boards of King County, we belong to Skateboard, which is South King County and North Pierce County. Uh, Representative Adam Smith was there, and the CEO from Sound Transit was there. Mr. Rogoff talked about the financial impacts that Sound Transit is facing, and, uh, talked about the fact that their board will be meeting soon to possibly delay some of the projects in the future. All the projects that have started are going to continue, but some projects in the future may be delayed because of lack of funding. I did ask him about the South OMF, so, um, and, because that was on the calendar as perhaps being delayed a little bit, but he did say that the site will be picked as we, as the schedule indicates, so it'll be picked sooner even if they don't need it right away. And, um, the last thing I'd like to say is, next week is the annual conference for AWC, it's online, it's free, and I would really encourage any of you, uh, to hop on and see what's going on. It, you can meet some people, attend some classes, hear some workshops, and it'll be great, so if you need help with that, Jerry Lynn can help you, because you do need to be registered, and it'll be on Zoom, so, and we all know Zoom, so, um, I hope you take, take advantage of that, so thank you very much.
Okay, great, now for the most important part of the evening, uh, we've got citizen comment, and, um, uh, these, uh, let's see here, uh, we have the following list, uh, what I've got right now is Lamont Stiles, and then, uh, Leanne Reliza, Betty Taylor, Sinetta Hunter, Si Semenini, Pam Ash, Allison Taylor, Jim Stiles, and Anisa Rogers. With that, let's start with, uh, with Mr. Stiles. He should be able to talk. Lamont?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes, thank you for, uh, recognizing my, uh, my comments tonight, peace and blessings to everybody. Um, my comment is basically, uh, the reason why I didn't, I, I support the, um, the flying of the flag, I support, um, the proclamation and all of that stuff, I think all of that stuff is important, um, as far as like Black Lives Matter and, and, um, recognizing that, um, a lot of the, the things that people were talking about before, um, that these are, are, are still issues that we're gonna come up with, and so, um, uh, I, I, I heard somebody say, "Don't break the law, and you won't see the police." Um, I think that that's, that's for some people, I think for other people, you don't even have to be breaking the law, and you can have, um, interaction with the police. Um, so I think, uh, going forward, I would, uh, definitely like to see, um, more, um, uh, recognition in the budget, um, for alternative things besides the, the alternatives besides the police, such as, um, investing in, um, community-based, uh, organizations, um, those are proven, um, ways of, 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 um, reducing crime, and they actually go, go to the, the source of the problem. I remember, um, a few years ago, when we were talking about SCORE, and I remember going to, um, the city council meeting and, um, talking to the council about SCORE, and wondering why the, um, the, uh, I'm sorry, but, um, I, I remember, um, looking at SCORE and, and, and wondering how was it bankrupting the city, and then looking at the contract that SCORE had with the city, and thinking to myself, like, who signed this contract? And so I hope, um, going forward, we have, we're, we're better stewards, um... And so I hope, um, going forward, we have, we're, we're better stewards, um, with the city and the taxpayers' money. And, um, I don't think that, um, what we were asking for before, which was, um, to, um, look over the, the overtime budget, having a cap on the overtime budget for the police. Um, just looking at the different ways of, um, addressing, uh, 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 issues in our community, not using the police as a Band-Aid for everything. And I think that, um, when we voiced it then, it's, it's still rings true to this day. Again, um, the situation with, uh, the lawsuit, I was there for that. I saw it. That cost the city money. I think that it could have been held, uh, or, or dealt with differently. And I just hope that, um, with everything that's going, with everything that's going on right now, uh, uh, addressing Black Lives Matter and things of this nature, that we have policies and we put our money where our mouth is when it, when it comes to, um, really, uh, uh, addressing that these Black Lives Matter. Um, there are, are definite ways to address, um, crime than just trying to put the police as a Band-Aid for everything. And so, um, I think that going forward, I would like to see the, the council get behind and actually, um, hold, have some type of plan besides the police to, 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 uh, address what's going on. There, the police do not prevent crime. They react to crime. And if what we see in Seattle with all the people, all the police could not stop that. You would have to bring in the National Guard. So we want to get, stop it before it even gets to that point and actually address the issue that the citizens are talking about. And that being said, I thank everybody for their time. I know it's going to be hard going forward with, um, the, the situation with the virus, but hopefully we get my guy from IT some help if he hasn't already got some help. Um, and, and, and to make this easier for, for citizens to get involved. I would definitely like to see an investment in IT and some of the other, um, areas that needed, uh, uh, help with, in from a budgetary standpoint. So I know the money's tight, but hopefully, um, we can be good stewards of, of, of the taxpayer dollars. Thank you so much and y'all, you guys have a great day.
Thank you very much. Um, Leanne Reliza. And I, let's have everyone, when the, when the, I don't know if everybody can see the time, but when the time has expired. I, I don't like to interrupt people. No one, you know, I really don't want to be rude, but when the time is up, I don't know if you can see it, but do we have a, like a little ding or something that can?
I can do that and then I can silence it if you want to do that, Mayor.
Yeah. I will say, um, I am going to be reading off of a piece, so, um, I, I can't look at the time while I'm, I'm reading at the same time. So just, I wanted to give you guys a heads up about that.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, Leanne. Let's get, let's go ahead. You're on.
All right. Well, I've observed, um, as members from the LGBTQ plus and the POC community, uh, that we have spoken up about our hardships and are met often with dismissal, not from the governing body, but its people. Uh, because of this, uh, there's been overshadowing of voices of hatefulness from arts. And this has caused a lot of our groups, um, to be forced to demand that they are seen and heard for the sake of their own safety. Instead of meeting these folks with compassion, they are oftentimes met with not just contradiction, but even a large amount of hostility. This makes me think that our city would rather feel liked by certain groups or its people to placate the situation. If our, if our members have to demand their voices to be fairly represented and heard, where will our city stand for them in times of hardship? We have made it clear that the city is ready to move forward and we should not feel held back due to members that are not suffering, but just facing discomfort and things they don't quite understand. I feel sad knowing that the community I've grown up in from elementary school to high school up until adulthood is rejecting people like myself. I feel worried for my peers who also feel the same way and want to build trust who are exposed to news report after news report of brutality from both law enforcement and their city from harassment to hate speech, both publicly and privately. I am angry at parades that support a politician that has made attempts to remove nondiscrimination protections for LGBTQ people when it comes to healthcare and health insurance. And this was supported by NPR only four days ago and has diverted attention away from the real topic of these protests. And that is having reform within our police force so that we can better our communities. I feel concerned that this has happened all while shaking hands with our cops and city representatives under the pride flag during Pride Month here at City Hall. This makes me feel unsafe as a POC, not knowing the protocols of the cops and therefore not knowing how to protect myself from potential misunderstandings. The city of Federal Way needs to know where our representative stands. Our community needs to acknowledge the hurtful behavior that has ensued. This has only sent a message that empowers people to graffiti whites only at a Starbucks. Nazi salute high school student, schooler, uh, excuse me. Nazi salute high schools, high schoolers for expressing their anger, which I've personally bore witness to, and harass multiracial families, excuse me, accusing them to be Antifa, who just wanted to go camping. So what message will you send in response to that? We ask that the city fly a flag or post a banner in solidarity for Black Lives Matter on this issue. Black Lives Matter does not mean Black Lives Matter more than others and making Black Lives Matter should not impede on your daily life. All it does is give recognition to those who are suffering right now and asking for help. So why not stand up for increasing the quality of life for your neighbors without hindering your comfortability? Nothing about your life will change. So, thank you, City Council, for your time.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Leanne. And you got it within two seconds. Great job. Um, and thank you for your comments. Yeah, good job. Um, all right, Betty Taylor.
Hi, um, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Betty Taylor. And I have two things I want to talk about. I have to move fast because I only have three minutes. Okay. First of all, I want to talk about, um, um, I, lately I've, I've seen many cities, many cities all over. They are having like different rallies, you know, they are rallying up the community, you know, and stuff like that in support of people that are, um, uh, dealing with this COVID crisis. Not just the COVID crisis, but something George Floyd, you know, and it's impacted us all. Cities from all over are coming together as one. Um, I know that, um, it's a social distancing matter, but, you know, and stuff like that. And people seem to come out and stuff, but I haven't seen Federal Way really come out as much as I'm on a seat. I've seen different people like congregate on different corners, but not the whole city as a whole. So, um, um, and I would like to see that changed. Um, I would like to see that changed. I would like to see, I want that, I, I would like to see it come up with strategies and solutions on how can we get involved? What can we do to show our support? Um, because it's really important. I mean, um, Rincon had a prayer rally today at City Hall. They prayed for the city of Seattle in Rincon. I thought that was really impressive. Last week, Seattle had a, a rally. They had thousands and thousands of people come. I thought that was impressive, but I'm looking for Federal Way. Where are we? Are we hiding or what? My second thing that I want to talk about is we know that, um, um, National Night Out is usually August 4th. It will not be August 4th this year, but it's supposed to be August 6th. I need to find out for my, my thing because we usually have night out at the Town Square Park. And if there's no socialization going on, well, we cannot have night out at the Town Square Park. I just need somebody to tell me just in my ear that we will not have, uh, night out at the Town Square Park. And if not, what can we do as a city as a whole? We need to come together. We really, somehow, somehow we got to make this thing work. You, you know, this is not my city. This is not just your city, but we have, we are a city of, of 96,000 people. You know, and what I would like to see, I would like to see all races, all nationalities come to, come together. We need to come together. Um, but, um, night out, I need to find out for sure. No Town Square Park. Is that right? Am I wrong or what? Do we know what we're going to do? I know I have 38 seconds to go because I'm watching the clock. So, um, um, yeah, I just need to find out, find out because, um, find out. Because we've been, this, this will be our first year, fourth year of doing it at Town Square Park. So this impacts not just Town Square, but the entire community. What are we doing as a whole? Now, I'm, I've said my piece.
All right. Uh, thank you. Um, uh, thank you, Betty. Um, I'll have the chief, uh, have somebody get in touch with you. Is the best way to reach you by email or by phone?
Either way, email or phone.
Okay. We'll get you the information on that. Obviously we're not going to have, we're not going to have National Night Out in August. So, and I think the concern in October, uh, would be that it would be potentially cold, but we'll, we're working our way through this. We'll talk about that. I'll have somebody reach out to you. And the second thing is actually, uh, by the way, just a little bit of trivia. Uh, we've, I just got a population update that we are, uh, 98,500. So I think we're within about 1,500 people away from the magic number of 100,000 people in Federal Way. So that's kind of fun. Yeah, it's kind of fun. Okay. Thank you, Betty. Uh, great job. We'll, we'll get back to you. Okay? Thank you for all you do in our community. Okay. Now, Sinetta Hunter.
In investing substantial sums in minority-serving medical institutions, we have medical institutions in some areas of.
Huh, okay.
Apologize. I, I'm not sure why that is going.
So, uh, Sinetta.
Sinetta Hunter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I just want to commend the city, um, for its willingness to acknowledge the importance of Juneteenth. Uh, this day is not just an important time. Uh-oh. Uh, this day is not just an important time for African Americans, but for all Americans. And so I commend you on your efforts and congratulations on your proclamation. I would also like to encourage the city, um, to allow the Black Lives Matters flag to be raised at City Hall. This is a critical time in our country and our community. And for real change to occur, we need to join forces as never before. The LGBTQ community, um, has unwaveringly connected to the civil rights movement began by African Americans. So I think it would be a great showing of equity and diversity to raise the flags together. Finally, in the spirit of Black Lives Matter, I want to encourage the city to use this time, if they're not already, to review the city's policies and practices around police accountability. The city, um, just spent an enormous amount of time and money on unnecessary lawsuits. One officer has cost, um, cost the taxpayers of Federal Way over a million dollars due to his misconduct. The former chief, um, warned that this officer could cost the city and indeed he has. I'm encouraging the city to do what's right. If not now, when? Our families do not want a lawsuit. We want a change and it is our hope that the city wants the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Sinetta. Appreciate you. Um, okay. Si Semenini.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you so much for reading the Juneteenth proclamation. I agree with everyone who came before me. It was great to read. I'm thinking you're going to start the timer. Okay, good. Uh, I am so glad that Leanne brought that pre-prepared statement because I was worried I'd have to squeeze two things into three minutes. But I agree with everything that she said. And if we're going to circle back to member Honda's statement about Facebook, I can certainly say the optics of that event do not make our city look good on Facebook. But what I wanted to discuss with you councilmembers today and ask you is what we have done in terms of thinking about equity and addressing the economic injustice that's also impacting communities of color on top of COVID's community health outcomes with the CARES money. What planning has been done in terms of making sure that how the CARES money is spent is transparent, but also that we are inviting our local businesses of color to share their feedback? Because in terms of my informal surveying of our neighborhood, whether speaking to the BNR Espresso Coffee Shop owner or many other business owners, they are expressing an absence of outreach by city council and a lack of understanding of how the CARES money is going to be utilized by the city to address the economic and community health outcomes of COVID. So if you could share a little bit of information on your next plans on how to make the CARES funding and, and discussion process transparent for all community members, that would be extremely helpful.
All right. Thank you, Si. Um, on Council Business 7A, we're going to be discussing that. And, uh, we've got a very detailed plan, which will be rolled out by our finance director and our economic development director. And they've been hard at work on this. Okay, um, now.
I'm, I'm sorry. My, my question wasn't when the plan's going to be rolled out. My question is, how will community be engaged, especially our businesses that are owned by members of color?
You're going to find out during the, uh, Si, we've got a, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. And we don't do the, the back and forth. Were, were you done with your comment?
It was a question and I didn't receive an answer. That's why I'm asking.
Uh, you, you did receive an answer, Si. We're going to have a presentation on 7A and you're going to, you're going to, we're going to roll that out on the plans that our economic development director have been working on. And the transparency is what we do in a public meeting, uh, tonight. So, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, Pam Ash.
Mayor, Pam Ash isn't, uh, joined to the, to the meeting. We've been trying to sort that out. But we can't find her.
Okay, great. Thank you. Allison Taylor.
Hi, uh, I'm just checking. I have five minutes, correct?
Yes, you do.
Great. Uh, Mayor Honda, President, Mayor Honda. No, Mayor Farrell, President Honda and councilmembers. I can read. Sorry, I can't even see your face. No, Susan didn't pay me to do that. Sorry. I came to the last meeting in a celebratory mood about the pride flag being raised over the city, our city hall, and I am still proud of that. We didn't talk about how, uh, pride came to be a civil rights movement though. In 1969, queer folks were tired of abuse by their citizens and also police who would humiliate them, berate them, arrest trans women and throw them into cells with cisgendered men, knowing the verbal abuse, the physical violence and the rapes that they would face. And then history tells us that two black and brown trans women, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, got tired of that abuse and started what is now known as the Stonewall Riots. Pride came to be because queer people were tired and rioted to start a revolution. It is not difficult to see the ties between Stonewall and the Black Lives Matter movement. But I don't know who's, I'm sorry. Can we pause?
Yeah, let's pause. I, people need to put on their, um, uh, their mute because we've got.
Which is very distracting. I'm sorry. I'm super sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Black people are tired of being othered, tired of being seen as less than or not seen at all, targeted unfairly, assumed to be violent, tired of facing, tired of facing punishment disproportionately to their whites counterparts. Let's run the numbers on police brutality. 73% of the US is white, 13% is black. In 2017, 457 white people were killed by the police, 223 black people. If you multiply that by 5.5, you have 1,226 black people versus 457 white people. That is unacceptable. So black people are done accepting this and some white people are very hard, are trying very hard to get up to speed on how to make the proper adjustments to support black people in their lives and in our communities. Some people are clearly still struggling, struggling to do this. I was proud on 5/31 when we had over 400 people demonstrating against unnecessary police violence in our nation. On Fa, last Friday, 6/12, we had more than 200 people come out after a day of hard rain to support the Black Lives Matter Seattle movement, who in Seattle had a silent march with 60,000 people. Those were the first demonstrations of our kind in Federal Way and I was proud to organize and support them. These protests were public and they were invited. Uh, the whole community was invited. Somebody's mic is still on. I don't know what's going on. Um, sadly, there's a mixed message about how our organizers feel about police. Defund the police does not mean get rid of cops. It means change the way they do their jobs and find other ways to add social workers, um, de-escalation training, help with mental health and people with disability training, uh, and take some of the budget and reallocate it into community programming. Auditing ourselves shouldn't be something we, to fear if we aren't doing anything wrong. So let's dive in and figure out how. I'm sorry. Can you hear that?
Yeah, we still got you, Allison. Uh, everybody's, uh, microphones are muted except yours and mine. And I'm not doing it.
I'm just hearing the noise. It's weird. I'm so sorry and I'm hoping.
Can we stop for a second?
Playing my time.
Yeah, can you stop for a second? Can we add 30 seconds? Are you able to do that, Stephanie?
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. All right, go ahead.
Then on Saturday, a community member, uh, organized a We Support Our Police event. This community member is a well-known bigot who uses the Lord's name in vain as his shield. Uh, his intentions are clear when he makes move and his supporters know it. The event was set up secretly. Only a few people were invited and all of the adults were white. were white. Um, then, as the events went on, the lead organizer and his friends came to our City Hall with their trucks and cars draped in Trump flags and made in China Trump garb. Celebrating the police is cool. Uh, bringing, uh, political, a divisive political statement to our City Hall, this moment was inappropriate, not cool. And while the mayor, you were not there, there were two city council members that should have spoken up for their black and brown and Native constituents, period. It would have been an uncomfortable moment to say, hey, guys, this isn't what we're here for. Let's stay, stay focused on the police and lose the Trump stuff. But these convos, that's what you signed up for when you became an elected official in this diverse ci, city. Let's learn how to have some uncomfortable conversations. Also, there was a lieutenant that was called out to take a photo op with these, with, with these particular Trump supporters. And again, I think that he should learn how to, uh, control the optics and understand that taking a picture with a Trump hat, supporter, uh, supporter in a Trump hat says to black people, I might not be safer on that cop. I've already expressed my thoughts to the chief, and as much as I respect our chief, I don't think he heard me. I know that I'm not the only one speaking about this issue, so I hope you can hear us tonight. Other ways to show that you care about black people, raise the Black Lives Matter flag tomorrow. It can share the Black Pride Flags poll. Update the Facebook page and the city website with supportive Black Lives Matter statements. Council members, you were offered tonight equity and diversity training by AWC. Take it. Stop denying, uh, and arguing when you are called out on your privilege and racism. Allocate appropriate funding to support black businesses, including that CARES money. Use those vacant buildings to open up black businesses. Read more, listen more, learn more, do better, and stop saying you care about black people, but showing us that you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Um, okay, Jim Stiles.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, President of Council, hello, President Council Honda. Uh, that's an interesting, interesting person to follow. Um, I was at that, that rally, uh, along with my wife, uh, on Saturday. Uh, if anybody checks, my wife is, uh, is not a white, white person, didn't have a Trump hat on, although she is a Trump supporter, as am I. But here's the point. What we were doing there, some people showed up with, with, uh, flags, American flags. So what we did is we, as we, we supported the, the, uh, the police five years ago and supported, supported the police all the way along, was we went this time to City Hall at the request of somebody else, uh, and, and, uh, we wanted to show our support to the, for the police. It was not a political rally. It was an expression of support. Right now, police in our community and a lot of other communities around the country are being targeted, unfortunately, sometimes literally, but targeted as, as being somehow complicit in the horrible murder of a fellow American citizen. Mr. Floyd was not, he was not allowed to speak. He was not allowed to, to have his, his rights respected as a human being, as an American citizen. And for that, we have a court system to be able to deal with it. The, what we wanted people to know is that the police are not the enemy. They're not the enemy of black people. They're not the enemy of white people. And, and what Allison Taylor has tried to do and, and acting as, as, uh, the spokesperson for, for, uh, a group that...
Actually, Jim, Jim, can I interrupt you just for a second? Let's do this.
I think you just did. So yes, yes, you can.
I know, no. I, it's okay, but we're gonna put some more, more time on the cal, on the clock. I just, let, let's, uh, Jim, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I really, but can we, um, let's refrain from talking about individuals, okay?
Uh, well, that's one of the reasons that I'm here is because what this individual just said right before me. So I, I think it's really difficult in this case to allow her to speak and make the accusations that she did, not only here, but in other forums, and then not allow a response. I just don't think that's fair, Mayor Farrell, and that's probably one of the things we're here for, is fairness.
So, so you're, you're right. So let's put one minute, twenty minutes, twenty, one minute, twenty seconds on the clock. You can refer generally, but let's stay away from regular, regular, never remain. Just you can...
All right. Well, then, then I, I will, I will do that then, on, on, at your request, that I will do. So what we're interested in, in doing for, in memory of George Floyd and anybody else who has, has suffered at the hands of anyone unjustly, is we want justice for Americans. But our American citizens also happen to be police. And right now, we don't feel that they're being treated justly. They're not giving, being given the benefit of the doubt. They are looked at as are people who, uh, who don't support necessarily the, the idea that, that dividing us up is going to make us better. That diversity in and of itself is not good or bad. It just is. We are a diverse community. But if we don't come together and start and stop lecturing people, as the previous speaker did, on what white people should be doing or not doing, uh, is not gonna get us anywhere. We need to be able to help each other be our best selves. We need to help each other overcome whatever problems they have, whether, you know, from whatever unfairness there is. That's what we're about. And so we did the terrible things at, at that rally of, we didn't have a prayer for anybody in particular. We included the mayor and the president and the governor and all elected leaders to help bring us together. We actually saluted the flag. We, we actually had a pledge of allegiance, and we actually sang the Star Spangled Banner, maybe not well, but we did, because we were trying to show something that, no, we were not kneeling for the flag. We don't disrespect that because we respect that our country, although not perfect, has the ability to improve. We've seen a lot of improvement. I've been around long enough to have seen the difference from what happened in nineteen sixty-seven and sixty-eight, in the riots that happened then, and what's going on now. And I can tell you that those riots did not help us move forward. Rioting now and, and trying to divide us now is not gonna help us move forward. We want to work together to make people...
Okay. Okay.
We want to make people better.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, all right. Have a good day. All right, Anissa Rogers. Hi, Anissa.
Hello.
Okay, you've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Farrell, President Council Honda, and the council, city council members for giving me this opportunity to speak on the Black Lives Matter flag. Raising the Black Lives Matter flag will make a strong statement to the, the citizens of federal way, our region, state, and nation. We all know all lives matter, but unfortunately, black lives have always been the exception. Our nation, recent events have only emasculated this very notion. What better time to raise the flag than now? Raising the flag will restore hope for many and provide a visual reminder that all lives matter, including black lives. Some people refer to federal way as the flag, as the city between Tacoma and Seattle. The flag will set a high standard for the entire nation, or dare I say, the world. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. It was nice to meet you, Dave. Anderson, great job. Okay, um, that's what I've got for, oh, now we've got, uh, several letters. Uh, we've got, um, a letter from Alex Karachinko, then Jessica Erickson, then Judo Lada. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. But we have a, we have a couple others that are signed up, and also Pam Ash has joined.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, so let's, Pam was, what's that?
Yeah, and Lynn Idahosa is gonna, is going to talk as well.
Okay, so, um, uh, let's start with Pam Ash.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Uh, thank you, uh, council members for allowing me to speak tonight. I was having technical difficulties earlier when my team was first called. Um, so I want to thank you, uh, for, uh, helping me work through that, uh, glitch. And also, um, I want to express my extreme gratitude for the Juneteenth proclamation that was presented by the council tonight. Um, it, it means an awful lot to the black community, and, um, I think it's one step in the direction of showing support for, uh, the black community in federal way. I'm wondering whether Chief Wang, uh, Mayor Farrell, and city council members have considered, though, the message that was sent and the impact made by the, uh, gathering at City Hall that's already been mentioned, uh, by two, uh, previous speakers on Saturday, June thirteenth. While citizens and city officials certainly have the right and the responsibility to support law enforcement, I'm wondering if the chief, uh, the mayor, and council members have given thought to how this could be perceived as partisan favoritism in light of the fact that until this evening, um, there has not been a show of support for the BLM, um, movement. I am so happy to have heard, uh, a consideration of positions that will be taken by Council Member Moore and, uh, Council Member Honda, so I'm extremely appreciative and grateful of that. Um, but this, this gathering, which I understand, uh, actually had, uh, a federalway police officer wearing attire and other members in attendance displaying signs on their vehicles with messages supporting President Trump. Um, this could be perceived as favoritism, given the fact that not much has been done in a show of support for the BLM movement. Not many efforts have been, uh, presented to that effort in an environment where black people are angry, grieving, and in pain in our city. So, uh, I appreciate Mayor Farrell's statement a week or so ago condemning the murder of George, George Floyd. Um, but with the exception of, uh, Council Member Lydia Sepha Dawson, no real statement other than this evening, uh, or action has been made recognizing or supporting the efforts of BLM to bring attention to the systemic disparities in law enforcement and other systems across the nation and in our city. So, um, if the chief, the mayor, and the council members had not before considered the kind of impact and the apparent favoritism, uh, that this may have, uh, communicated to, uh, members of color and particularly, uh, members of the black community in federal way, I certainly hope that they will, uh, acknowledge that, uh, in the future and acknowledge the positive and peaceful efforts of BLM in federal way. Um, because otherwise, you only serve to further factionalize and divide our community and to further marginalize its citizens of color. So I hope you're considering this, and I know that you will make plans to correct this behavior and avoid such omissions in the future. Again, I want to really thank the council for the steps that they have taken regarding the proclamation and, uh, again, the comments by Council Member Moore and Council Member Honda. And I hope that flying the, um, Black Lives Matter flag will be one such action to show support and solidarity in this.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Pam. And, uh, now we move on to, uh, when we get down to public comment, I am gonna ask, uh, the, uh, chief to address, um, uh, this, uh, situation. But I want to, let's get through public comment first. Uh, Lynn Idahosa Berry.
Hey, guys. Just Idahosa. Thank you so much. But, um, I did want to come back on because I'm, as appreciative as I am of the city council, uh, acknowledging the council, uh, acknowledging the proclamation that was in my official role as a co-founder of the Black Collective. Um, now, moving forward, I'm gonna discuss this CARES Act funding. And, um, this proposal is rushed. This is completely inappropriate. The problems that are gonna come with the, if you guys pass this, are deeper than just my community. Let's be honest. All across America, organizations that are true small businesses, between one and five employees, have struggled to tap into any type of pandemic funding. And this is the last stop. Currently, there is no more federally approved funding. A lot of our home-based businesses, if you look at the proposal that you'll be showing to the rest of the community shortly, the numbers on that show that there is a tremendous about, amount of businesses, especially black businesses, but just for the sake of the community, there's a tremendous amount of businesses that are gonna be affected. Going with a ten-employee model is really reckless, because those organizations have already had an opportunity, because they have the staffing to assist them in applying for many other pandemic funding. You guys are the last stop our stylists, barbers have, the last stop that our home-based businesses have, the last stop that our childcare providers have. And the reality is, you guys know them. This is your community. The federal government doesn't know them. They don't know how to hold them accountable, but we do know how to hold you accountable. So if you guys choose to do this, I will outorganize you to figure out another way to help my community. But guess what? That's not what we want. And Mayor Farrell, I find it to be really disingenuous that when I asked you guys for the, the keys, figure out how a third party could help you guys administer this funding, I asked you guys to forward the documents. We have still not received that, even right now. And you guys know that you guys do not do a sufficient job of distributing funding to nonprofits currently. My nonprofit, I have heard that other nonprofits, way larger than mine, are tired of how labor-intensive your process is. We advocated for money to go to the youth action team, thirteen thousand dollars. You made them talk to you for seven months. Nonprofits cannot afford to legislate like, with you like that. Decide what you need. Make the process clear. Make it equitable. There are so many pieces of this document that are not clearly explained because you guys desire to lack accountability. Firm this document up, fix it, or do not pass it. Because you passing this shows how much you truly care about your community, because you just started working on this in the past two weeks. And I know that for a fax, via email, proof of it. So go and work harder for the community. Thank you.
And then we've got Cynthia McAtan.
Hello. Good evening again. Um, I only wanted to discuss, actually, I had two things I wanted to discuss. I'll, I'll make it pretty quick. The first one was that on Friday, in honor of the Black Lives Matter movement, um, those that did not go to the Seattle for the over sixty thousand, um, member march that took place, um, we stayed in our own communities and, and did a, a silent demonstration. And there were several youth, um, that we brought along with the Black Lives Matters Movement from federalway's, um, teachers. And brought youth, and we were out with our signs and demonstrating out of love and respect. And several people who were turning the corner or driving, instead of, um, honking in solidarity or just driving and not acknowledging, several people turned the corner, pulled up close to, um, those that were, of us that were demonstrating and gave us the bird. If that's the way that the, some people in the community feel, that's fine. But when you see children out there, youth, when you turn the corner and you see people with signs who are in wheelchairs and have other walking aids, it is not appropriate to send a message of hate and disrespect. We are adults, and we should model that. It was offensive. It was very dangerous, and it was hurtful. So I say to you, for those that did that, please don't do it again. Go to the polls and vote if you are not in agreement with what you see happening. But when youth are out there, we have to model adulthood. And that was not the way to model that behavior. The other issue I want to talk about is the council, um, the item that's coming up, I think it's 7A. Um, I just have some minor input, uh, well, major for me. To make the process more inclusive, a marketing plan needs to be advised. At the previous council meeting, I gave a list of organizations that are culturally competent and have a mass media movement to be able to get the word out about these funds. I would encourage you to use those organizations. I would also encourage you to use, um, the King County, um, Black Chamber of Commerce, which a lot of organizations and businesses here, um, that identify as black owned would also be, um, a member of. So I would encourage you to have an inclusive marketing plan. The second one is, I would look at the funding. In the report that Tim gave, gave the written report, as I read it, there were, um, um, over a thousand businesses employed, small businesses with zero to five employees. I recommend that the first million dollars cohort...
Can you finish your thought real quickly?
Yes, thank you. That the first million go to, go to small businesses with zero to, less than five employees, and that that second round of fund go to those that are five to ten. That'll be a more equitable distribution in reaching those, uh, uh, businesses of color. I will send you something written, um, regarding my other proposals. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Cynthia. Okay. Okay, now we've got written letters. Do we have, Stephanie, do we have, or Thomas, any other callers online?
Mayor, none that I see.
Okay, I'll, we'll just go through, let me, Alex Kirachinko, written, and then we've got Jessica Erickson, written, Judo Lada, written comment, Mary Ann Hartman, written comment, Teresa Guerrero, written comment, Bernadine Lund, then Steve Mayer, and then just a person identified as Amy. Everyone knows Amy, right? I'm just kidding. All right, Alex Kirachinko. Stephanie, we'll read, and if you could time these, please.
Okay, all right, I will, I will cue up the timer then.
Please do. Okay. And then, and what we'll do, if a letter goes over, Stephanie, is we'll just finish the sentence, or if it's a paragraph or something, we'll do our best to finish the thought.
Okay, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
All right. First reader, the letter reads, Dear Mayor Farrell and City Council, having watched the June 6, 2020 Parks Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meetings on YouTube, I heard Greg Berusso asked to have the Black Lives Matter banner put on the city's website and Facebook page. Quote, "Is there a way that a banner could get somewhere on our webpage, somewhere, whether it be Facebook or somewhere else on our city webpage, Greg Berusso? I would like to know what the City of Federalway criteria is to request that kind of special treatment. What legal authority does the city have to promote a corporation of Black Lives Matter that donates specifically to a super PAC called Act Blue? Act Blue has given hundreds of millions to Democrats. Many residents of Federalway do not support the actions resulting from the Black Lives Matter protests that are often violent and will feel disregarded when they see this banner on our city's website and Facebook pages. We want our city to be welcoming and friendly to all and treat citizens equally and fairly. All lives matter, including those of the unborn children and people of color. As a representative of the Slavic community in Federalway, I'm very concerned that our elected representatives' ideas to divide our city and give special preferential treatment to certain groups. Regards, Alex Kirachinko, Sunday School Director, Church of Blessing." Next letter is from Jessica Erickson, says, "Federalway Action Against King County's Coroner Inquest Process Comment. I'm very disappointed to hear that City of Federalway is moving forward to block the important transparency reforms made to King County's coroner inquest process, which are held when there are fatal law enforcement shootings. Unfortunately, we know these happen all too often. Since the city's legal challenge was made, there are over 20 families who are prevented from learning more about circumstances surrounding their loved ones' deaths. The city's joint press release writes that the purpose of an inquest is to obtain an objective, nonpartisan, nonpolitically motivated, and independent opinion as to the cause of death and circumstances surrounding the death. Unfortunately, this can occur under the previous rules, which prevent the family of the victim from asking about the officer's disciplinary history, training history, and whether the officer followed their training. The old rules also do not require an officer to appear. Sometimes the officer is the only surviving witness to the death, so their presence is crucial for getting the facts. Unfortunately, the city's decision to announce the continuance of legal challenges follows the death of George Floyd and other calls for changes on how we do policing. This stands in stark contrast to the many communities across the country that are trying to find ways to ensure their law enforcement agencies better serve their communities. This lawsuit suggests that City of Federalway does not support getting all sides of the story and that our city does not support transparency and accountability for our law enforcement. I believe that a police officer's disciplinary complaint and training history is all relevant information to investigating fatal shootings. Furthermore, these lawsuits usually cost money and/or city employees' staff time. In a time where government has to tighten the belt, I question if this is a good use of city funds or staff time. Thank you, Jessica Erickson, Federalway resident."
Okay, next letter.
Next letter is Judo Lada, it says, "Hello, City Council and Mayor. One versus seven. If you have forgotten his name, Malik Williams was fatally shot by Federalway Police Officers in December 2019. It was deemed as justifiable homicide, 86 shots. Andy Wong, the Federalway Police Chief, had this to say. On the other hand, I just couldn't tell you how grateful I am because in terms of life and death, we're talking about inches here. I'm not here to argue the details, but I'm upset that this happened in my community, that the officers involved were not held to a higher standard, that there were no other alternatives than 86 shots. Andy Wong was wrong when he said they were inches away from death. We were not inches away from life and death. Someone, in fact, died, a brother, a son, Malik Williams. You guys get to go home to your kids and your loved ones, and you just took a part of my soul from me, said father of Malik Williams. When we see Black Lives Matter, what does it mean? It means that we care for the most vulnerable within our communities. It means to search for solutions. It means taking action. It means taking a look in the mirror and seeing ourselves for what we truly are. Fly that Black Lives Matter flag on the 320th pole, fly it at City Hall, fly it where the community will see and understand that the leaders of Federalway are being proactive and breaking down the systems of injustice, to reform and reimagine our systems to work for all of us, for Malik Williams and his family. Thanks, Judo."
Okay, next letter.
Next letter from Mary Ann Hartman, "Hi, the last few days have been extremely difficult for the nation and the city, but I'm especially feeling a heightened state of anxiety and alertness in this city that I have called home since 2013. I moved my family here because I believe this was a welcoming, diverse community. I live in the Twin Lakes area. To this, I've discovered that the diversity piece is not completely true in my immediate community. However, we have managed to believe we were accepted and felt safe until a few weeks ago. I am biracial, Filipino Black. My oldest son is mostly Black and stands six foot four inches. He has never been in any trouble. He's been an outstanding youth in school, sports, and also companies, also companies need to community events such as cleanups. He came home a couple of weeks ago and stated that he did not want to walk or run in our neighborhood anymore. He said that he is getting glares and had a sense of fear. We began to walk together, and he started running with our dogs by himself at the end of last week. Unfortunately, yesterday, he informed me that a police officer in a marked car slowed down, turned off his lights and stared at him, then sped off. Hearing this broke my heart. The fear that my family is living, the fear that my family is living in is unacceptable. Then to find out that members of our police force are happily taking pictures with Trump supporters at City Hall on June 13th, I have to question whether those officers who took an oath to serve would in fact protect my family or possibly even murder one of us. And to this to happen at City Hall, this is unfortunate. This location should represent all communities within the city. Trump supporters nationwide have clearly shown that they do not have respect for those with values or cultures that differ from their own. By allowing this impromptu gathering, I'm finding it hard to believe that the city has the interests of its citizens as a priority. I would like to also add that this came a day after the rally in support of BLM on Friday. I was in attendance. Out of the 25-plus times Federalway officers passed, I waved and attempted to make eye contact with all of them. Only four acknowledged me. The others were visibly upset as they had smirks, rolled their eyes, or shook their heads. Some just avoided eye contact altogether. This has sent a powerful message to my family and my community that we don't matter, that we should fear for our safety and our lives. I'm a mentor at Todd Beamer High School. Last week, I graduated from Highland with my bachelor's in youth development. I start my master's program this fall. I currently work in a foster care agency serving youth with multiple traumas and behavioral health needs. The majority of the youth I serve have experienced multiple crises because of COVID-19. I've worked harder in recent months than ever before. I have found it increasingly difficult to give hope to these children I serve as I'm quickly losing hope in my elected officials. Please help me find again, please help me find this again and prove me wrong. I would like to see some acknowledgement of support by my city, perhaps flying a BLM flag at the City Hall, posting on a public forum. I'm a resident of Federalway, and I just want to feel safe in my own home and neighborhood again. Mary Ann Hartman."
Okay, and now Teresa Guerrero.
Dear Mayor, City Council Members, and Peace Officers, I'm a resident of Federalway with a family and friend ties to this area since 1970. Federalway is at a crossroads. We need your voice and leadership against racism and support of Black Lives Matter. This is a call to action for our elected officials. Federalway in 2020 is growing in diverse community. We have neighbors of a variety of backgrounds, cultures, and abilities, including many young families with school-age children. It's expected that when we vote for someone in a nonpartisan city leadership role, they actually represent the people they're elected to lead. This means they represent all of the people in Federalway. They must do so with integrity and continue to earn the trust of our community with their actions. In what seems like a misleading attempt to show support for our Federalway police, some of our neighbors had a secret "Support the Police" action on Saturday, 6/13/20. Unlike the many events very publicly planned, organized, and executed to demonstrate our support against police brutality and desired equity for our Black neighbors and friends, this event didn't appear, didn't appear anywhere on public social media in Federalway. These folks showed up at our City Hall in MAGA and Trump 2020 hats with Trump signs all over their cars and trucks. They took pictures with Federalway Police Lieutenant in uniform. Let's be clear, this visual message is one that Black people will see and think, can I trust this officer protecting my family? I contend this was just not a "we love our police" demonstration. This was a Trump rally in our own community at our City Hall nonetheless, supported by city leaders. Please note who attended this event: Federalway City Council Member Linda Coachmar, Federalway City Council Member Martin Moore, Jack Walsh, owner of Sub-Zero Ice Cream, various leaders of the 30th Legislative Republicans. These folks do not, I repeat, they do not represent my values. These same people did not support the Black Lives Matter or the death of George Floyd in any significant way. Moore's 30-minute photo opportunity at the Federalway Black Lives Matter protest is confusing and cowardly way of leading diverse communities when inequities kill. This group made a political statement at City Hall by supporting a president who did not support people of color, the queer community, immigrants, people with disabilities, and more. These city council members and statewide candidates supported this effort. We cannot stand for this. I am in support of all action taken to support the BLM movement and putting the BLM flag at City Hall or BLM banner on the city website or the Facebook page. This must be supported. This is a call for action to the mayor, council members, and peace officers. You are mismanaging our city and continue to disregard and abuse upstanding members of our Black community, such as Federalway Black Collective. Respond to the request to work in partnership with Federalway elected officials to support Black lives and to end racist police and community brutality and inequities now. Federalway resident, Black Lives supporter, community activist, and educator."
Okay, in the, in the future, we need to make sure, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I, we need to make sure that we don't mention names, just like if somebody was, was speaking. So that one slipped through, and I, you know, the purpose of public comment isn't to identify individual council members or members of staff, or council will clearly calls that out. So I apologize, council, we'll catch you next time. Bernadine Lund.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. A big thank you for raising the pride flag over City Hall. That actually means a great deal to more people than you realize. Our neighbor has a pride flag on their house. The neighbor said that once a teenager came up to her and said it was nice to see the flag and that it gave her, the teenager, a feeling of being in a safe place. Hopefully, the flag over City Hall is giving LGBTQ people a feeling of being safe and accepted. In a similar vein, I also want to thank you for reclaiming this week, Juneteenth week, in support of Black history. I strongly support any effort to also fly the Black Lives Matters flag at City Hall. One note of caution after reading the comments and seeing the pictures of the "Support the Police" action on June 13, 2020 in front of City Hall. The images show a uniformed police officer being embraced by someone wearing a MAGA hat, and many of the others in the group had Trump political signs on their cars and trucks. The description of pictures give the impression that the police officer was supportive of the campaign. Please ask Police Chief Wong to take steps to prevent his officers, who are wearing a police uniform, from being caught in a way that gives the impression the officers endorse a political, a particular campaign, particularly when the police uniform represents a nonpartisan position. Bernadine Lund, resident of Federalway.
Okay, and then we've got Steve Mayer.
Federalway City Council, Mayor Farrell, council members, citizens of Federalway. My name is Steve Mayer. I have lived in and around the greater Federalway area since 1974. I grew up in Federalway schools, my kids went to Federalway schools, and I just finished my 20th year teaching in Federalway at Mark Twain Elementary. Tonight, I come to you to say Black Lives Matter. That should not be a controversial statement. That should not be a partisan statement. It is a statement that is true and that as elected officials in Federalway, each one of you needs to believe and each one of you needs to say. In life, timing is important. Think of driving 40 miles an hour in a 40-hour, in a 40 mile an hour limit, that's okay. And a 20 mile per hour school zone, not okay. If you're going to take a shower, it's a good idea to take your clothes off. If you're in a council meeting, it's a good idea to keep them on, yes, even in Zoom. It's one thing to say all lives matter, they do. It's not appropriate to, to say it directly after someone says, "Black Lives Matter." Your intent might not be to negate the statement, but the action does just that. In the same vein, you are, you are no we in racial reconciling in our country. A long-awaited change that mushroomed with the police killing of George Floyd, now is the time to say Black Lives Matter. Now is the time for each of you to show that Black Lives Matter to you. It's not the time to hold a rally for the police force. When you do that, you are saying intentionally or not that you value the police more than the many, many African Americans in our community. It is not the time to hold a joint rally for the police force and for the President Trump at City Hall. This is a nonpartisan council by definition, but of course, we know you have political affiliations. Most of you on this board claim to be moderate. That's fine, but now is not the time to appease all sides or all lives. Now is the time to say Black Lives Matter. You can do that on the city's social media pages, you can do that with a flag at City Hall, but you need to do it, not just in some very proclamation, but in a very visible way to our community. In fact, you could do it right now. I yield my remaining time for each of you to say Black Lives Matter."
Okay, and then Amy.
Hi, I was extremely disappointed that there was a MAGA rally that happened at City Hall on 6/13/20 that involved local representatives and those running for office. Please understand that during this time of great pain and distress for many, that was very upsetting that there was a distinctly political rally that was taken as another photo opportunity for Trump promotion instead of just a public to show support for our local police in the area. I'm grateful for the local police, along with the mayor, for respecting the peaceful BLM protests in our area and understanding that we need to express our frustration with the national crisis. However, our local public officials participating in a MAGA moment was salt in the wounds that was already there and conveys a much different message than the efforts that were already made to find peace with the movement and understanding with the whole community. I also fully support the BLM flag to be flown at City Hall and on our Facebook and website. To ignore that is, to ignore that this is a very diverse community, is to ignore what makes Federalway, Federalway. Thank you, Amy, a Federalway resident.
Okay, and my understanding is, according to Thomas, that Mr. Frank Fields has raised his hand digitally. Let's see, I don't know if I can see it. One sec. I wouldn't be able to see it.
Mayor, it was, it was up briefly, and he lowered it, but I've allowed him to talk and asked him to unmute if, if he likes, if he would want to.
Frank, would you like to say a few words?
No, he's not unmuting.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and thank you for your letter earlier. Okay, all right, I believe we are now through public comment. I gotta, we gotta do a better job, obviously, of, of making sure that we comply with our rules, but as relates to letters, it brings up a touchy issue that we, we want to be careful we're not altering letters. So I think in the, in the future, you know, we'll have to, and I think Stephanie did this like once or twice in the lead-up to this meeting where we were sending letters back or asking people to correct that. So we'll, we'll do that in the future. Chief, would you like to, Chief Wong, can you please address this, this issue that I indicated that I would have you address it? I, I think, I think it would be altogether appropriate to hear from you in regard to your interpretation of what actually occurred.
Sure, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We were informed, I believe it was Friday, that there would be a small gathering of people that were going to come to City Hall, the police department, to show their appreciation. We certainly had no information. There was nothing advertised, and we were told it would be any sort of pro-Trump rally of any sort. So I don't think anybody that was coming, you know, from the city staff was thinking that's what they were, you know, attending. So Lieutenant that was on duty, on patrol, did greet the folks that came. They brought some food for our department members, some treats, so he did that. He treated them with respect. One of the expectations that I have, when we have community members that come to the police department or we're running an event, that we treat all of our residents, you know, with respect and dignity, and that's what that lieutenant was doing. So if there's a mistake made, I take full responsibility. Regardless of political affiliation, I will tell you that we need to treat all our residents with equal respect. And for example, recently, we probably, maybe even more, we probably had four Black Lives Matter events in our city, and we've signed officers to those events. And to make sure, that we contact the organizers and know what their plans are, and we sign officers to keep everyone safe at that event. So maybe the people that were attending the event probably doesn't know that we have officers assigned to it. In one incident, we had a traffic accident. We had a motorcycle that actually crashed into people that were there, 320th and PAC, and we were immediately there to treat people and take care of people. So that's an example of us being there. So regardless of who's organizing the event, we want to treat everyone with respect and dignity. That lieutenant did not know that people would be coming to maybe use political, and I don't think anybody knew that was there, that was going to, that was going to happen. And he, when I spoke to him later, he said, hey, I wasn't going to violate camp- And, uh, he, uh, when I spoke to him later, he said, "Hey, I wasn't gonna violate campaign laws," but they asked for photo opportunities, and he took five or six photos, and then he took it with a child, he took it with other people and so forth, but he said he made sure that there were no, uh, campaign signs or anything like that, not to violate, um, you know, any campaign laws. Uh, but, uh, he was, he did treat them with respect and dignity, and that's my expectation, so I take full responsibility.
Okay.
Any questions, sir?
All right. Um, council, do you have any questions to the chief?
Uh, no.
Let me, uh, uh, hold on, hold on for a second, Councilmember Coachmar. Um, okay, I see your hand is up. Councilmember Coachmar, please.
Thank you, uh, mayor and, uh, all of our citizens. I, you need to know that there's been a lot of allegations this evening. I, I can tell you that none of us knew that there was going to be Trump flags there. I can tell you that the officer couldn't have been more gracious. I can tell you that we were invited, I went because we represent our police department. I'm on the city council. Yes, I wanna thank our, we've had a lot of people come to thank our police department. They brought cookies, they've been sent, uh, letters and emails, um, of course, Black Lives Matter, there's no question about that. When I was asked to speak at the event, I said, "No, I'm neutral." So just, please, next time, before you jump to conclusions, I would appreciate a phone call, I'm perfectly accessible, and email anything at all. I'm very open, I'm happy to meet with people, I've said that repeatedly. You need to understand that there are a lot of people in our city, now 98,500. They all have different opinions, they should all be treated with equal respect. I'm not saying that to denigrate anything at all, I am saying that there are people with different opinions, they're very contrary to mine. I am not saying that anything that's happened lately is contrary to my opinion, I am simply saying that our people are very opinionated. We are elected to represent an entire community, to do it fairly, equally, respectfully. Please, if you have a problem, come, talk to us, we're here for you, I've said that so many, many times, and please, our staff works very hard, they're trying to figure out the CARES Act, they're trying to abide by the federal guidelines, we're trying to take care of all of our community businesses that are hurting right now. We have people that are frightened, they don't know where the next paycheck is gonna come from, they don't know if they're going to be able to stay in their homes. So we have a lot of issues we're dealing with right now, in fact, we're dealing with a declining budget, it's, it's an extremely difficult time. What would be really wonderful if we could all work together, everyone has different ideas, but let's get together, compromise where we can, and, and just, please, talk. And so, thank you very much, and thank, by the way, I've stood on the street corner and received a bird a number of times, and it is very frustrating, and I believe, and I believe some of our other people who run for office have had the same. Um, and by the way, uh, uh, our police officers, when they drive by, I don't think they're supposed to respond, I think they're supposed to drive by and keep peace. So if you're, if you're standing on a street corner and you feel you're not being, uh, noticed, uh, I don't think they're supposed to do that, but thank you for listening.
I think we've all received, uh, a one-figure salute, uh, standing out there, it's not for the faint of heart. Either as serving on a city council, either as citizenhood, and I, I think everyone here, uh, I know appreciates the comments on both sides. We've got a very committed, passionate community and, uh, and a just a really great council. Speaking of that, council, what, I, I think what we're gonna do is, uh, a point of personal privilege here, I think we need to break for 10 minutes, we've been at this for three hours. It is 9:26, I'm gonna set my, uh, I, my, I've been informed that, uh, perhaps maybe one or more of the council members, uh, uh, wish it, but it'd be good for me too, so why don't we say 10 minutes, I will start the, start the timer right now, we will be in recess for nine minutes, and, um, excuse me, 10 minutes, um, and, uh, that puts it, um, at about, I'm not a math major, so, uh, uh, 9:36, we will, uh, we will, um, reconvene. At that time, I will accept the motion from the council president to extend the, the time past 10:00 PM. All right, we are in recess for that purpose.
When I first came in, I was gonna pass, but I knew it was getting more.
When I first came in, I was gonna pass, but I knew it was getting more.
Okay, in the, uh, in the future, uh, we need to make sure, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I, we
need to make sure that we don't mention, uh, names, just like if somebody was, was speaking,
so, uh, that one slipped through, um, and I, you know, the purpose of public comment
isn't to identify individual, uh, council members or members of staff, or, or council
will clearly calls that out, so, uh, I apologize, council, we'll, we'll catch you next time.
Okay, in the, uh, in the future, uh, we need to make sure, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I, we need to make sure that we don't mention, uh, names, just like if somebody was, was speaking, so, uh, that one slipped through, um, and I, you know, the purpose of public comment isn't to identify individual, uh, council members or members of staff, or, or council will clearly calls that out, so, uh, I apologize, council, we'll, we'll catch you next time. Okay, and then Amy.
Hi, I was extremely disappointed that there was a MAGA rally that happened at city hall on 6/13/20 that involved local representatives and those running for office. Please understand that during this time of great pain and distress for many, that was very upsetting that there was a distinctly political rally that was taken as another photo opportunity for Trump promotion instead of just a public to show support for our local police in the area.
Okay, and, uh, our city clerk, do we have Councilmember Moore online now?
Not yet.
I have the last two motions passing 6-0.
Okay, all right, so that, uh, that passed 6-0, the record should reflect that, uh, Councilmember Moore did not vote in that, in that motion. Item six, uh, public hearing, or number six, public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing for the resolution, um, adoption of a revised six-year transportation improvement plan, a TIP, and arterial street improvement plan, ASIP. First, we'll have a staff report from Rick Perez, our city traffic engineer. That'll be followed by, uh, city council questions and discussion, and then citizen comment for three minutes each. At this point, uh, Rick Perez, the floor is yours.
Get this loaded up, and away we go. Um, so, everybody can see this and hear me?
Uh, we, we, uh, we don't see anything yet, and I don't see you yet. We hear you, though.
Okay, well, that's a start.
Do you need, Thomas?
Is, are you in the building?
Uh, yeah, Jason's here with me, so.
Okay.
There we go.
Now, can you see it? Mm-hmm. All right, great, thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, so, yes, I'm here tonight to present our six-year transportation improvement plan, um, and I will note that, um, you've been emailed a couple of attachments, um, for the record, those were in the land use and transportation committee packet, um, and, uh, so I'll be discussing those tonight. So, uh, policy question before, the council, should the council authorize staff to proceed with the adoption of the 2021 through 26 City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Plan, Arterial Street Improvement Plan on June 16th, 2020? So, um, the, the, like, we call it the TIP, it outlines a six-year plan for transportation-related capital projects, we are required to update this annually, um, it is also a requirement for grant eligibility, and so, um, we prioritize carefully to make sure that if we see an opportunity in the grants funding arena, then we try to make sure it gets on the TIP. Um, it must be financially constrained, meaning that we have to have a reasonable expectation that we can fund the projects in at least the first three years. Um, it is subject to air quality testing by the Future Sound Regional Council and is adopted after a public hearing, which is what we're doing now. So, um, this is a list of the prioritization criteria adopted by the council, um, and, We don't see anything yet, and I don't see you yet. We hear you, though.
Okay, well, that's a start.
Do you need Thomas? Where are you in the building?
Yeah, Jason's here with me, so.
Okay.
There we go.
Now, can you see it? All right, great, thank you, sir.
Okay, so, yes, here tonight to present our six-year transportation improvement plan. And I will note that you've been emailed a couple of attachments. For the record, those were in the land use and transportation committee packet. And so I'll be discussing those tonight. So, policy question before the council is, should the council authorize staff to proceed with the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one through twenty-six City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Plan, arterial street improvement plan on June sixteen, twenty twenty? So, we call it the T I P. It outlines a six-year plan for transportation-related capital projects. We are required to update this annually. It is also a requirement for grant eligibility, and so we prioritize carefully to make sure that if we see an opportunity in the grants funding arena, then we try to make sure it gets on the T I P. It must be financially constrained, meaning that we have to have a reasonable expectation that we can fund the projects in at least the first three years. It is subject to air quality testing by the Future Sound Regional Council and is adopted after a public hearing, which is what we're doing now. So, this is a list of the prioritization criteria adopted by the council. And we've, over time, increased the emphasis on safety improvements as well as supporting modes other than single occupancy vehicle over time. So, this map, which is one of the attachments, shows the different projects and the geographic distribution of them. So, blue is overlay projects that are specifically identified because they have grant funds associated with them. Purple is major corridor improvements. Red dots are intersections, and green are non-motorized improvements. So, compared to previous years, we have one project that got completed. And so that was on Twenty-first Avenue South, from three-fourteenth to three-sixteenth, and that is actually the staircase in the city center area. The one project that is being proposed to be revised is the city center access phase two. As we've moved further down in the process of city center access, we are finding that the phasing would be ideally a little different than what we had originally proposed. So now we are proposing that the first days of construction would build southbound ramps to three-twenty-fourth and then construct three-twenty-fourth between I five and Twenty-third Avenue South. Over the years, we've started adding ongoing programs. One of them that we hadn't added is our street vegetation management, now that we have brought some of that in-house. There we go. So, we're proposing a few new projects. One of them is the adaptive traffic control system, which we've talked about a lot before. Due to funding constraints, we weren't able to upgrade all the detection in phase one. And so this is a project that appears to have a good chance of getting funded at P S R C that will complete phase one to its maximum optimization and also provide surveillance cameras on ninety-nine and on three-twentieth Street. Looking forward, adaptive phase four, which covers most of First Avenue South, and phase five, which covers Campus Drive and three-twenty, or excuse me, Twenty-first Avenue Southwest. We have added a, we proposed to add a project for military road preservation from three-twentieth to Highway eighteen, and it looks like that is definitely getting funded. Three-fifty-sixth, we are looking at, working with surface water management. Culverts need to be replaced on three-fifty-six for the high levels. And we've had a project on the shelf there to widen that stretch to make it consistent with the rest of three-fifty-sixth. And so we are looking at joining forces on that project. We had a request for traffic calming at three-forty-fourth and Twenty-seventh by constructing some type of traffic circle or mini roundabout. And it's too big of a project for the neighborhood traffic safety program to handle, so we have applied for a safety grant from the state for this product, for this location. And it would help address a couple of different safety issues out there. Another project that we're hoping will get funded is, through the P S R C, is a Southwest King County Regional Trail Plan. The graphic here shows the county-wide regional trail system that is proposed. And you'll notice that there's not much down here in Federal Way other than, you know, our existing B P A trail and West Campus Trail. And so we'd like to figure out how we can connect all those trail segments into the rest of the regional system, not only into King County, but also into Tacoma. And adjacent agencies are anxious to partner with us on this. Some of the other projects that we're adding, we've applied for grants on this as well. So, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons combined with pedestrian refuge island on major streets has improved safety and mobility for pedestrians. It's been fairly popular program. And one of the grants we applied for would, several more locations around the city, based on another council-adopted prioritization process. One of the problems we've had in some locations is that the rectangular rapid flashing beacon installations tend to get knocked down a lot. And it's anywhere between five to twenty thousand to replace one of those, depending on how bad the damage is. So, we've also applied for a safety grant to go vertical instead and have those mounted on a mast arm where people aren't as likely to hit them. So, that concludes the new projects. So, options to be considered is option one, to recommend approval of the resolution adopting the transportation improvement plan as presented tonight, or option two, do not recommend approval of the draft document, provide direction of staff. Mayor's recommendation, as well as Land Use and Transportation Committee's recommendation, was to approve option one, to approve the resolution adopting the plan as presented. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. All right, Councilmember Stephanie Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. My question is, this between, for two thousand, wait, twenty-one through twenty-two-six, right?
Correct.
So, is there any criteria or anything that could change the priorities of which projects get done when? I mean, I know they're already scheduled, but is there anything that could alter that? Like funding or whatever?
Yeah, definitely. A lot of these projects are contingent on grant funding in order to move forward. And so that could alter the schedule for when they'd move forward. Beyond that, I mean, this is a plan that's revisited every year. And we also are looking for ways to incorporate measures of social equity into the prioritization process. And a lot of agencies are talking about that, haven't seen too much in, you know, straightforward terms as to how to do that. So that is something that we're looking into.
Okay, council, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any citizen comment on this? Stephanie or Thomas? Stephanie?
No, Mayor, I don't have anything that I've received.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Kuchmar, excuse me, Councilmember Copay, do you have a motion with regard to the hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Now, Councilmember Copay for the main motion.
I move approval of the proposed resolution.
Second.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion, a second. And is there any discussion to that? Hearing none? All those in favor of the main motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Now, we're on to seven A, council consideration of CARES Act allocation process. First, we're gonna have staff report from Tim Johnson, our economic development director, and Adei Arulua, our finance director. We'll call if you will at the last meeting. We said that we, well, we've been identifying and said that we had been allocated and two-point-nine million dollars CARES Act funding. We were waiting to hear back from the State Department of Commerce in regard to the allocation and rules for that. And then when we were telling the council members that we were gonna work as hard as we could, and the direction we did receive from council was to work with all deliberate speed to get this money out and to develop a plan in order to do so with some key metrics in regard to transparency, in regard to making sure that we help people while they actually need it, and making sure that we did so in a transparent, fair, equitable manner. So, before we get any further, I wanna say that our economic development direct, sorry?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Our economic development director is a one-person department. And I have been calling him on the weekends, in the evenings, Saturdays, Sundays. When I say that he's the hardest-working man in government, I mean it. And I want, this has been an all-hands-on-deck operation, and I know that he's been working with Adei, our finance director, our city attorney, and other departments, working hard to make sure that we could get this proposal incorporated into the council packet. It was delivered to the council last week. And I know that he is, I'm singing Tim Johnson's praises here because, as your economic development director, he's worked incredibly hard. And our focus has been to get businesses' resources that have been closed for months as a result of the COVID-nineteen crisis. And so with that, I will turn this over to Tim Johnson and Adei. Tim?
Mayor, council president, council members, community. I'm sixty-three years of age. I have done six natural disasters. I started forty years ago when Mount St. Helens erupted, passing out S B A loan documents to help people in Spokane, and then when she blew the second time in Portland. I've said to the city council on multiple occasions, the sad fact about this is that there's no buildings that you can see in ashes. There's no buildings underwater. There's no buildings in rubble. We know what we don't know, and we don't know how bad it is. And I've been struggling with this, as the mayor said, because I'm working relentlessly. I understand this. At my age and having done this, this is a crisis. And you know it's a crisis. And you're starting to see the implications of our closing economy and not even beginning to understand all of the consequences that it's having on people. It took me down seriously, and I don't, I think the mayor knows this. I was in really bad shape. I thought I was having a heart attack. And in fact, city council member Mark Copay came to my assistance. It took me to the emergency room at St. Joseph's in Tacoma. When they got done with me, they found out that I had a hole in my stomach the size of the Grand Canyon. They patched me up and sent me back in, and I've been working day and night trying to get this done. I'm disheartened with my profession because of the fact that I've been asking the cities of Auburn, Kent, Quillah, Renton, Burien, Des Moines, and others, find out what they're doing and how they're doing it. And they're not. We're the only ones that have proceeded so far with at least something on paper that has enabled us to look at options. Now everybody's looking at Federal Way. I hope that everyone will understand that I've been trying to do the best we can under the circumstances. In the, in the, in the work that I did, I understood, even before this started, we started looking at this in May, when the mayor, the governor had preliminarily provided insight that they were gonna release these dollars. And I informed the mayor and talked to council members in the community. I said, this is a grant program. It should be for liquidity, not for insolvency. And I said, the other problem that I have with this is the people at the federal government, all the quality people that we used to have when we had the Great Recession, there was a lot of great programs that came out of it, like the community development, financial institutions, community development entities, and in other organizations that helped us get through the Great Recession and beyond, that were really focused on minority women-owned businesses. It just seemed to have been ignored. And getting through this process, I looked at this, and I said, we have to have a priority for this. And then Adei Arulua told me today, the Commerce Department, state Commerce Department, said that isn't, can't provide that preferential guideline. So the frustration that I have with this is, we get a program that, trying to do the very best I can with trying to serve this community, I'm gonna walk you through it. But please understand something. I understand that we have to do this because you were concerned about the speed in which we needed to deploy this. I don't have answers on a lot of this, and I look forward to taking your input in your direction and making it a better document. But in the meantime, this is some of the best work I've been able to do for you with the experience that I have. And there is nobody else out there in the state that's done it of the magnitude that we're talking about tonight. So let's get started. The policy question is, should the city council approve the mayor's recommendation approving a small business assistance grant program in response to COVID-nineteen? Our recommendation came, and I heard Cynthia loud and clear, and I respect her tremendously. And she's, there's, she has some validity to what she's talking about. But in this particular case, we looked at a deployment of a potential two-round grant program not to exceed two million dollars. Assistance to businesses with ten or less employees, that's what Cynthia was talking about. I'll get to that in a moment. Approval of one million dollars tonight for round one. And that would be selection of option two, which would provide one thousand dollars per business up to five hundred businesses, two thousand per business up to two-hundred-and-fifty businesses. If you go to round two, then just multiply that times two, and you get to a larger, obviously, deployment. Approve the budget for round one not to exceed seventy thousand dollars for software and personnel. Again, the governor announced the three-hundred million dollars to local jurisdictions. The state allocated two-point-nine million for the coronavirus relief funds for Federal Way, was based upon population. We can reimburse the city for both the grant monies and the cost for its deployment. Now, the CARES Act program that was deployed from the state to the city, the eligible criterias were for medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses for public employee response to COVID, facilitate compliance with COVID-nineteen measures, economic support for which I was directed to complete this report tonight, and other COVID-related nineteen expenses. So, again, directed by the mayor to formulate a plan, and I thank Adei Arulua for all of this help on this. We spent a considerable amount of evenings and weekends working through this. As you'll find out, again, we were engaged in May. Department directors from finance, myself, and I T started looking at programs to be able, software programs to be able to help and assist us in this. Council, you wanted deployment grants in a quick and efficient manner to aid Federal Way businesses, so that's what we've tried to do. In our analysis, we looked at two options. One was third-party vendors, and the other one was city deployment. Through the city, pardon me, through the third-party vendors, when we were starting to talk to people, they have to ramp up to do this. There isn't anybody that's quick to do this, and particularly with the magnitude of what we're talking about. There's some that can do three-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred thousand, but they have substantial work they have to do. So they were slow to the market, could take upwards to two months to get to it. Higher costs for deployment at around seven-and-a-half to twenty percent, just on one million-dollar round. And the city still has the liability and the work associated with the collection of contracts and issues associated with transparency and liability. City deployment involved administration, software acquisition, working a web-based platform, ensuring that we had the necessary personnel to do this. Correspondingly, make sure that any issue that can't be handled through that digital format, it can be handled through telecommunications so that there is somebody on that they can either see face-to-face or that there's somebody on the end of a telephone line. Well, in our city effort, because of my expertise, I figured we, I can see that we can get to the marketplace place much quicker. Our, we have a lower cost at around seven percent, if not lower, when we achieve a second round at two million, we probably go somewhere around ten to twelve percent. Our key costs are in personnel, software is inexpensive. Software is inexpensive, and it's one-and-done. Department support at legal and finance. So the eligibility issues that have come to the forefront, that have tried to make sure that we try to cover everybody equitably, is that they have to be domiciled in Federal Way. You can't be in northeast Tacoma, you can't be in Milton, you can't be on the corner of 272nd in Kent or in Des Moines. You must possess a Federal Way business license. I want to share something with you. The governor put out his own small business grant program early on in this process, and it was shared with Ade Arawula and myself that a third of the businesses in Federal Way that applied for that weren't eligible because they didn't even have a business In looking at this, I think it's fair and equitable to say that you needed to be in business prior to 2000 because there's really no fair trial for a company in knowing what your track record is if you started business in February and you ran right up against it. King County...
Actually, Tim, can I interrupt you for a second? Is that 2020 instead of 2000?
I'm terribly sorry. You are correct. I apologize for that. It is 2020. My apologies, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Must be current on all taxes and government fees. By the way, I want to go back to that one, and been in business. King County is looking at, you had had to been in business, in their instructions on their website, saying, which they have not deployed yet. They have not deployed their loan program, or their, I'm sorry, their grant program. They say that you need to be three years. You know, city staff here doesn't believe that you had to have that kind of track record. Again, must be current on all taxes and government fees, and not a recipient of other state and federal COVID-19 funding. Now, the last one, staff looked at that, and the rationale behind that was, is that we're trying to get as much money out to as many people as we possibly can. And I think the mayor and city council know that I immediately started working in March, even before we got to a lockdown, of looking and talking with business people as quickly as we possibly could, and assisted a variety of black and people of color businesses to try to help them, and had been very successful. But it's never enough, and you know, I'm working multiple things, and there needed to be about 10 Tim Johnsons to make sure that that got done to the level where I think we really could make some headway, but unfortunately, that wasn't the case. The criteria eligibility, and I'll explain this in a second, is no more than 10 employees. Now, the other one that King County asked us to put in here, I don't think it really is of any consequence, is annual revenues cannot exceed 1.5 million. Let me share something with you. I asked a question, I said, "Well, is that net or gross?" And nobody's ever gotten back to me, and I keep walking around going, "Well, you want us to accept this so that we're all the same in King County? Well, you better answer the question." So honestly, I'm not sure that that is so important to the issue, but just be aware of that fact. Okay, slightly, we have graded in 5,000 businesses, or 82% of the total businesses that employ less than five people. There's 491 businesses, or 8%, that employ 6 to 10 employees. That equals 90% of roughly 5,600 businesses out of the total, which is just a little over 6,000. Now, I'm going to stop there for a moment. We're trying to get the most coverage that we possibly can, and when I walk you through the grant totals, you'll get an idea of what we were, the methodology that we're trying to employ. But it's a paltry sum of money, and you now know how many years, how old I am, and how many years I have. I have a whole different game plan that I would have implemented, but I don't because I can't do it because of the state regulations. But I will hope that somebody, either council members or the folks online, will ask me when I get to the conclusion of this, because I think you'll find it a very interesting proposal. I also want to stop for a moment and also say, when I was working with council member Berusso, he had asked me at length, oh, this was well over a month ago, "How many minority businesses do we have in Federal Way?" We have 2,336 as identified by the Census Bureau from the business census in 2012. So when you look at the numbers, and you try to make this work, you're trying to get to those folks, the $2 million is paltry. It doesn't cover it. And the sad fact about it is, let's put it in perspective, if you gave everybody $5,000 and you've got 6,000 businesses, what is that? That's $30 billion. I got to get my printing press up and running because I got to start printing $28 million here pretty quick. So again, here's the size of businesses in Federal Way, five employees or less, there you get the numbers and you get the idea. Here's the breakdown, and you can work these numbers any way you want, just please understand something. Please. We're trying to get this on paper and try to get it done, and I don't think we have to push through it tonight in order to have a solution on this. We can look at this further. So the first option was to have a simple and easy response, 2,000 per businesses up to 500 businesses. You get a 10% coverage with that, and 20% if you have round two in the identified eligible group, and you use a subsequent lottery. But within that, remember, that staff report that I had had was that the preferential element went to minority and women-owned businesses, and I'll explain that to you. We know the Federal Reserve has been following this for decades, and since the Great Recession... Hold on to your hats on this one. Nearly 51% of women, minority women-owned businesses have to use a credit card to fund their business. I'll say that again. Almost 51% of minority women business enterprises have to use a credit card. Now, you all know that Congress changed the laws to credit card use. You run those levels up, those credit card companies can call your debt due, and you're left there having to pay that. And how do you do that when your business is closed, and you're trying to hold on to it? Then you add into the fact that Congress also changed the approval into the Community Reinvestment Act, and now that's impacted minority and women-owned businesses, and particularly even harder in disadvantaged areas. None of this makes sense to me, so I'm trying to do the best I can. Option two was 1,000 per businesses up to 500, and then 2,000 per businesses up to 250 businesses. That gets you to around almost the 30% of the identified eligible group. In option three, it's some heavily weighted criteria. People asked me, said, "Well, why don't you look at larger grant awards?" I said, "Okay, so here's a breakdown of what that would look like. Round one would only get you to potentially 5.5% of the identified eligible group, and round two would get you to 11%. Yeah, somebody would be happy if they got, those 50 people would be happy if they got the $5,000 reward, but everybody else sure wouldn't. This is a slow process because it requires a significant amount of work on the backside of the software program to do the weighted criteria. Four is kind of a hybrid. It's $1,000, it's 1,000 grants of $1,000 to the similar priorities that we had identified in options one and two, which now have been unfortunately taken away from us. And if a second round, go to larger grants, this is kind of what Cynthia was talking about, and I tried to follow that logic. Initially, again, it gets the larger identified eligible group in the first round, however, with the second round, it doesn't get as much as option two. It's also slower to deploy due to waiting process. So that recommendation was at that, and that was to answer the question of the council's quick deployment, and answer to helping businesses as quickly as we can and as many as we possibly can. The eligible costs are simple: rent, utilities, insurance, marketing, personal protection equipment, payroll, and benefit expenses. I want you to pay close attention to the personal protection equipment, because that is an ever-ending cost that is impacting businesses today, specifically businesses with retail frontage, stores, and office space. Not so much, obviously, the home-based businesses. I don't want to be critical of that, but think about it. You may not have as many customers rolling through your store as you do if you had a retail fort or an office, and you have to work with that, and all of the guidelines necessary to achieve that end result. It's a very expensive cost. Again, the grants, it's trying to get liquidity in the marketplace, it's a business stimulus. Our program does not require business financials. I think I reduced the blood pressure in my city attorney, because then it takes a lot of setup, and it would slow the process to have taken all of the financial statements, tax records, things of that nature. This is a grant. This isn't a loan program. It follows the state guidelines. We will ensure ADA and foreign languages. The software we're using handles immediately 20 languages. I can identify who those are, and it does fulfill ADA standards. And again, we'd have a hotline and assistance phone number yet to be identified, but we have a phone number that we can implement for that purposes. The elements associated with the grant program would require an application. It's pretty simple. It shouldn't take more than maybe three minutes to fill out. I have to have a proof of a business license. We'll ask you to fill out a W-9 because money would transfer hand, so we have to have that for tax purposes. And because the state requires it, we have to have a grant contract with you. So again, I remember what I need to do here. If you relied on my 40 years of experience, here's what I would do. I would take that $2 million, and I would go work with the community development financial institutions that are both here in the state of Washington and that also serve the state of Washington. And I would use that as a loan loss reserve, and I would work with the CDFIs because they get to the Federal Reserve rate. I'm being told that I need to go to a webcam so you can see my muggly mug. Excuse me. Thank you. So I'm going to go back again. I'd work with the CDFIs, use the $2 million for the loan loss reserve. The CDFIs can bring their investment of millions of dollars to Federal Way. It could be a seven-to-one ratio based upon our loan loss reserve, which means that they could deliver upwards to 14 to 15 million dollars to us in our community. At the Fed rate, which you all know is what it's about right now, 0.25, 025%, we pass that along to all of our business people in the community, and you would leverage that money to get to it. The sad fact about it is, and as I prefaced my remarks to you, I don't know where the intelligence at the federal and state levels went, but nobody's thinking about this. But this is what we did in 2008 during the Great Recession, and it's missing. And it's very unfortunate, and it's sad for me to tell you that tonight, because that's a solution. It's about liquidity. It's about getting money to these folks, and I don't know any other way to do it. If the state would take the brakes off of this, we could get there. We absolutely could get there. We could use Craft III and Evergreen CDFI. We could use a clearing. By the way, the clearinghouse CDFI, if you folks remember, are the people that helped finance the Performing Arts and Events Center. And why did they do that? Because they admired your support in October 2014, when you supported trying to keep open the county health services program instead of having that closed because of their budget issues. And they saw that, and you saved almost 13,000 of our population from having to get up weekly and go to Bellevue, the next closest health and human services unit here. The point I want to make is, there are greater options out there, but I'm stuck with this. And I don't, as city staff, I know that everybody's probably said I've talked too much this evening, so I'll shut up, but I think that this has really been frustrating for me. It comes at the end of my career, and I got to be honest with you. I know what I don't know, and what I don't know is how bad it is, and that's what I'm trying to find out. And let me share this with you. Let me share one other thing, Mayor, and I want to compliment you for a moment. In October, I've had no luck over the last six months, because as most people know, we finished up a major meeting with all the bankers in this town, asking them to help look at the Community Reinvestment Act and getting more money into this community for minority-owned businesses. That occurred on September 29th, I believe. On October 2nd, I was involved in a hit-and-run head-on car accident that laid me up for about six weeks, which subsequently tied me up from being able to implement a lot of these things. And that, since then, we've been playing catch-up. Mayor, I mean, you're the only mayor in the greater Seattle area that has taken advantage of the Federal Reserve Community Investment Connection Program and getting those bankers to help in this area. But here we are now in a different scenario where we need to figure out different solutions. This is what you have before you tonight. I can't unfortunately come up with any more innovative or creative ideas of how to get more money into the hands of more businesses. If there's any other options I could do, I will be more than happy. I am your servant, and if you come by City Hall on Saturdays and Sunday nights, you see the light burning over here in economic development.
I call him, he's there. So one of the things that we've been watching very carefully, we just got the word from the State Department of Commerce about the final word on this, because there were some questions about this just late last week, about, you know, exactly how we were going to get our money back, because this is a reimbursement program. We must allocate the money and then be reimbursed for it. So making sure that we're in strict compliance with the State Department of Commerce is absolutely essential. We did get, thanks to Ade and Tim, we did get word back, written word and confirmation from that individual from the State Department of Commerce, Mr. Hanson, from the State Department of Commerce, that this is, I believe, under 5A of the CARES Act guidelines by the State Department of Commerce, that this is reimbursable. And so we're ready to go to implement this. Recommendation is for item two. We've got questions by council member Tran and council member Dawson. It's been brought to my attention that we've got citizens that are raising their hands. The time for public comment was at the beginning of the meeting. We allow public comment for ordinances, but now is the time for council to engage in this process. I've got council member Tran, council member Asafa Dawson, then Berusso, and then we'll go from there. All right. Council member Tran?
Mayor, before you go, may I add some things to Tim's presentation, please?
Please do.
Just to be clear, I spent some time with Mr. Hanson from the Department of Commerce this afternoon, actually, before the meeting. Just so that the citizens understand and the council understand, the funding is not just for funding's sake. It has to be, an expense will not exist without COVID-19, or will be for a substantially different purpose. So whatever amount that the council decides to fund, those businesses needs to be able to say, "Well, the 2,000 or whatever it is that I'm getting is for an expense that I would not have incurred without COVID-19." So it's not like the previous grant the federal government gave out, that was a free money for all. It can only be, the expense has to be necessary. The expense is not filling a shortfall in government revenue. So I think there's some requirement, and I think one of the things that I think maybe Tim started talking about, we cannot exclusively say, "Well, it's going to be for minority business." It has to be for businesses in our community. So, and I think that is really, really important, to make sure that people know they have to spend it because it's COVID-related, now that they get the money and they can use it for whatever it is.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, first of all, I want to say that I'm really sorry to hear that you, you know, went to the hospital. I'm really sorry to hear that. I know that you spent so much time working on this and... I know that you spent so much time working on this and I really appreciate everything that you've done. So, but you need to take care of yourself, okay? Okay, now, I have a couple of comments and questions. Number one, I think I agree with you that we should use our staff to implement this program because the overhead of going with a vendor, I believe, I write it down correctly, between 7.5% to 20% is way too high. I mean, that would take up a lot of money from this pot of money. One additional benefit of using city employees to do this is maybe we can lessen the impact of layoff or furlough, you know, that happened to our employees right now. So I would rather go with city employee. So that's number one. So my question is this. We are going to give out $2 million, but we received 2.935 million. So what's going to happen to the $935,000?
Let me address, yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Let me address that. I generally pegged, let me just go back a step. So in conversations with the other mayors, that's the mayors of Kent, Renton, Auburn, Toquilla, the Sound Cities Association mayors, and they were talking about all going together and getting a common vendor. Remember the last council meeting when we discussed this? And they were talking about perhaps a 7%? A 7 to 10% cost for a third-party administrator? Well, number one, that's a lot of money. But number two, it was going to take too much time to get to mobilize that. And, oh, so when we were talking with those other cities, they actually were only talking about putting in at the most, a couple hundred thousand, excuse me, less than even 1 million, and they had comparable allocations. And then 1 million at the maximum. Because we can be, the city can be reimbursed for COVID-19 related expenses. However, as the council knows and the public may not know, that in regard to pure COVID-19 expenses, that's all we can be reimbursed for. Well, right now, Ade, can you identify, after, can you identify what the total expense is? And let me say this, we can't use budgeted positions that are already budgeted, they're already part of this prior to COVID. We cannot also compensate ourselves for lost revenue. So it's a very narrow field. And that's why we're looking at this 2.9 million dollar allocation. However, we can't use it on anything that's non-COVID-related. We can't use it for lost revenue or things that we hadn't already budgeted, like personnel. So I think with the most we had was probably a couple hundred thousand. I pegged it at about $2 million in consultation with Ade and Tim to leave ourselves room to be able to reimburse ourselves. But Ade, can you address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think part of what we can use this money for, which because we're meeting like this, I think acquiring the software to be able to do this, we're getting it because of COVID-19. We're getting some defider for some of our staff so that when they come back, they're protected, we can pay for that. I think we've had to sign a revised contract with our cleaners to make sure our properties, when the citizens start coming in, are clean more often than we usually do. Again, to minimize the passing around, the infection disease. We can reimburse ourselves for working on this grant. We can reimburse ourselves. And based on what they say is the expense that having to be done because of the COVID-19. So some of the things that the court, courtroom, we're having to make sure that the lawyers can communicate with the court remotely, that can be paid for. So as of now, I think we're looking probably by the end of October, we will have to spend a sizable, probably 300,000 or so. But we have to take care of expenses that are COVID-related with the city. If there's anything left, I think, you know, the mayor decides to disperse whatever that is left. But we should not push all of this money aside or away. Meanwhile, we're incurring some costs that can be properly seek reimbursement from the state. But as of now, we've incurred probably, I'm looking about 300,000.
Ade, thank you for that. Mayor, if that is the case, then can I ask for a commitment that, you know, whatever money that we have left after we spent to, you know, COVID-19 related for the city, whatever money we have left, can we make the commitment to divvy it up and give it out to more businesses later on?
That's my plan. I think that's what I think we need to do. We need to make sure we don't have wholesale failure of our businesses. We want to give out, I mean, ultimately, it's your decision, council. And I want to hold a little bit back, you know, getting, pushing all this money out up to, in fact, even the first wave is a million. And I think we're going to be able to get a better take on, you know, say we were able to reimburse ourselves 300,000 and then we had the administrative cost of this, you know, just talking in ballpark, maybe that's 100, 150. We've got staff. So, you know, it would be good to have a couple extra hundred thousand dollars, several hundred thousand dollars that we could push back out. But that's a decision for you as a council.
Thank you. And I do have just one more comment. And that is, I think since we are not going to be able to give every businesses a grant, I think we should just limit to those businesses with five or less employee. And currently, we have about 5,000. If we throw in the businesses with up to 10 employees, that will add another 491. So since we don't have the money to give it to everybody, why enlarge the pool? Instead, we just stay with the 5,000 and then go from there. So that's my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. That's exactly the policy issue that we need your guidance from. My, our concern was the restaurants. And most of these, many, many of these restaurants have more than five employees. So we're trying to identify, and in fact, actually, Tim, you want to talk to that issue as to why we pegged it at 10? But I think that's, we're trying to make sure that we get the money to the people, the businesses who really need it. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think you've heard me report on this before, that we had 275 businesses, restaurants in Federal Way, both full-service and limited-service restaurants. A high preponderance of our restaurants are minority-owned. Almost 50% are there. We did a report that's online about our restaurant community. We reached out to every restaurant in this city to ascertain their concerns. And Ade's staff did a yeoman's job on doing that. And I followed up with everybody that identified that they needed help and assistance. And what we learned, Councilmember, was is that, yeah, even the smaller ones have in excess of 10 people. But that's kind of where the onus was as it related to trying to make sure that we covered that basis.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tran. Councilmember Asapha Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. And I echo what Councilmember Tran said. I'm really sorry that you've had these issues and totally appreciate the time and effort you put into it and also appreciate your expertise and knowledge. And I also would like to say the same thing to Ade. So 82% of the businesses are, have under five people, right? Employees or people working for them. But then owner-only is 2,534, right? And so my concern is if these, I mean, 82% is really a large number. So even if we were going to serve the 51%, that's a lot of businesses, right? And so I think I kind of understand what Tran was proposing and I might go that route. My question then is, with Commerce, is there a way we can ask them to write a letter and say that we do want to also focus on minority-owned businesses and we would like to see that language in there? My first question. And I do appreciate that we're going to be doing it in-house and not hire a third-party because our staff, our employees know our community much better than a third-party vendor would. And so I appreciate the fact that we are going that route. If for some reason we don't get, our businesses don't get funding from Federal Way's pot, do you know if they can apply to King County directly and get funded that way? Those are my questions right there.
I'll try to answer a couple of those first and foremost. I'm going to turn to Ade and ask our finance director if he thought that that letter to Commerce would be of any value.
I think last time, when they met with group from Kent and Auburn, they gave them a different instruction. When they got pressured, they changed it. So if they hear from many communities, maybe as of now, they are saying, based on the rule, we cannot selectively use funding for one group against the other. But if, maybe if they get enough letter, maybe if they get enough call from several elected officials, maybe they will change. But as of now, they are saying no. Tomorrow, I'm planning to talk to Mr. Hanson again and see, but based on what they are saying now, no.
So just to add to that, a lot of these businesses, I don't know the number or the percentage, but most of them, I'm sure are minority-owned businesses. And if they don't get any kind, some kind of funding or some kind of support, they could seriously go out of business. And that's what I would like to make sure doesn't happen. And so that would be my concern and that's why I'd like to reach out to Commerce if at all possible.
But I think one thing that I think Tim mentioned earlier, majority of the businesses in Federal Way are minority-owned compared to other community. So without separating them out, they will be the majority of the businesses that will apply anyway. Because most of the businesses in Federal Way are minority-owned compared to a lot of other communities.
Mayor, this is Ryan. Could I just add one thing? It's possible that the answer changed from Commerce because of political or some other issue, but it's also possible, I mean, the area of law that governs when you're allowed to give preferential treatment to someone because of protected status where it's minority status or disability or anything like that, is very complicated. And it also, this is federal money, so we have to look at the federal money stuff too. So it's very possible that when they went back and looked at it closer with lawyers involved, that that's why the answer changed. So it doesn't hurt to ask for clarification again, but it just, it slows down the process. That's the only downside to asking again. But I suspect the answer was more legal than politics.
Okay. Mayor, I want to go back and ask Councilmember Asapha Dawson's other questions. So does staff know of other resources? So in that regard, an organization that I sit on the Board of Directors for, the Clearinghouse CDFI, has just been approved and is working with private investors to create the Minority Wealth Fund, which will be deploying close to a quarter of a billion dollars starting next week in the effort to help minority businesses. That's why I say the CDFIs are key in this process. And the discouragement that I'm having council members is that I don't see the state treasurer moving to work to coalesce the energies of the CDFIs in the state, let alone the CDFIs and the CDCs that serve our state. And I think it's really important that we get that capital in here. And again, as Ade mentioned, it's over 40% based upon the information that Councilmember Berusso and I checked on when we were working together on a previous resolution on minority map, percentage of minority businesses in Federal Way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Berusso.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Ade and Tim. I know all three spent enormous amount of time. And what Tim was just talking about, I had contacted him and at about 10 o'clock, he answered me back and I was kind of like, hey. I was really amazed at the end of my email back to him, I said, you need to go home. So Tim, thank you, and Ade, thank you very much. I know this is a lot of work. I just have a couple of questions on timelines. And so on the timeline of reimbursement, when we, our funds are given up, what is the timeline of getting our money back to the state? Number one. Then number two on timelines, as regards to the grant contracts, how comprehensive are those grant contracts going to be? So it comes back in a timely manner where some businesses won't have to worry about taking it to their attorneys to take a look at it and slow it down?
Well, I hate to do this to Ade, but I think he's the best one suited to answer that question about the reconciliation and payback.
Regarding the contract between us and the businesses, I think we're going to make it short. Part of what we'll be looking for is, and again, in talking to Mr. Hanson this afternoon, I wanted to make it so, well, we cannot be burdened with so much of this work as the business owner to attest that, yes, if they get 1,000, 2,000, it's entirely for COVID-19 related expenses. So that I will not have to audit a business or audit their receipt to say, well, what did you spend this $200 invoice for? So they take that on. So the contract will be simple. But part of the hiccup for now is for us to have the contract between us and the state. So I started that process again, the moment I asked them to send me the packet for City of Federal Way. We started the process today and I emailed them the who's name that they need to have on this, mayor's name, blah, 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 blah. So the moment we have that, I'm hoping, I think I talked to a city attorney, if you approve that when the contract comes, the mayor can sign that so that we don't have to bring that back to the council. That will speed things up. I think based on Tim's timeline that we're working on, we want to get most of this money out by next month.
Correct. Thank you.
So, and I think if we can schedule all of this, I'm hoping if they get this back to me, I sent it to them today. If they can get it back to me this week, I'll get a contract to city attorney to review so that the mayor can sign. But based on what I looked at, they sent me also a template. It's similar to what we signed for the Performing Arts Center. So it will not be a complicated thing. You know, like I said, we have several contracts with the Department of Commerce before, so it's similar, but I'll leave that for the city attorney to review. But it's similar to the things that we signed before.
All right. Thank you, Ade.
All right.
So just in regards to the reimbursement timeline, that's the only other thing I had.
Well, the reimbursement, we are the one that will be seeking reimbursement. If we set it up as a grant, you know, I think as I was telling the mayor, I want the money yesterday. So the moment we're able to get this grant and I can, you can be rest assured, actually, I will be, as we're mailing out the check, because that is what we did when we were building the Performing Arts Center, as we're mailing out the check, I'm sending the invoice to Department of Commerce. So you can be rest assured, we will be on that like a cheap suit to get our money back hopefully.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Okay. Thank you, Day. Thank you, Tim.
All right. Thank you. You had one, excuse me, Mayor. Councilman Berusso had one other question that we didn't answer, and that was on grant, our grant contracts with the awardees, correct, councilmember?
Yes, that was the other one. Just thank you, Tim.
But that is what I said, it is going to be straightforward. It won't be part of what, again, in talking to Mr. Anson, what we want to ask them, you are saying you are, we can attest that you have a business license here, and you are saying the money they were giving you will be used exclusively for COVID-related expenses. You know, I think that is one thing that they want to make sure it is really clear. They want to be sure that they will not have incurred the cost if it's not because of COVID-19. So they are saying the same thing in different ways. So we'll refer, and I asked them, so tomorrow, if they have any template, the sad news is, and Tim, you know this, we are way ahead of all of the other cities. We are the only one asking all these questions. And all the other are still deciding on the contract or whatever. So we helped them, even some of the standard that they established, we helped them define this. Because we were the one calling them, I was emailing them, I was talking to them as they were developing this policy. So that is part of why we don't have any sample out there. We will be the one that will develop this sample and which other cities will copy. And but in talking to them, what matters to them is it is exclusively used for COVID-19. And we'll write something up with the city attorney. And if I need to get a couple of comments from them, but the contract will be simple. It cannot be a 10-page contract that a mom-and-pop business will end up having to hire an attorney to understand what it is. You know, it's going to be simple to make it simple.
Thank you. And that's exactly what I was, I was looking forward to, to make sure that it was simple enough so it doesn't slow anything down, because we have to get this going. And that's what I didn't want either, is having someone spend the money, money they didn't have to go to attorneys and say, hey, can you look at this paperwork, this contract, to make sure we're okay? Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Day.
Okay, all right. Council President Honda.
Thank you. So thank you for all the work you and Tim and Day have done on this. I have a number of questions and I think I'll just read them and then we can go through them. So you talk about a lottery. And I'd like to understand what the lottery is. I'd like to understand when the first round would start and stop and when the second round would start or stop. Sorry. I'm trying to find a thing to plug my iPad in because it's running out of batteries. So my picture is kind of messed up. Are the employees considered full-time or part-time when we talk about 10 or less employees? And does that make a difference? Could we as a city provide the PPE to the small businesses so they don't have to spend their own money on that? Could we provide that as a city? Could we get it cheaper if we buy it in bulk? And then, and then give it out to the businesses as they need it?
In terms of Council President Honda, that is one of the qualified items that we can use the money for. If that is what the city wants to do, to buy these supplies and give it out.
It might be cheaper if we bought it in bulk than having the businesses buy small amounts of it?
Well, we're holding back $900,000 of the 2.9. And even, you know, we've got several hundred thousand dollars. So we could, you know, that's something we could do in addition to this option. So if you want to go out and buy, I mean, we could certainly have Ray and the team discern and do some research to figure out how much we could get for several hundred, how much PPE we could get. But then there's distribution of it after we've got this PPE and then a whole program about distribution. So there's a, there's a distribution issue of it as well. But I think that's why you want to hold back that money initially. All right. So what else, what other questions?
The minority businesses, I understand, need help, but I think all businesses in Federal Way need help right now. So I'm concerned about all businesses and I want to make sure that we're not forgetting any of the businesses. If they need help and they want to apply for this money, I don't think we should stop them. And have we heard from King County about their program? Have they talked anything about their program? How much they'll be using for Federal Way and what their qualifications are?
Just to be, that was one of the items that I picked with Mr. Anson. We need to be, when Tim or whoever is researching what King County is doing, we need to be careful. King County is getting its money directly from the federal government. We're getting ours through the state. We are following different rules. So I think, and one thing that it made clear to me that whatever it is that we do, it cannot extend till December. It has to end by October. And of course, King County can do theirs through December because they are working directly with the federal government. So I think the rules are a little bit different because what we're getting through the state, state is probably adding their own layer of rules to whatever it is.
Okay, well, so.
October is just around the corner.
Yes.
All right. So let's, Tim, have you heard, do you have any details in regard to what King County is up to? Let's go through these serially. And actually, but let's knock that one down first. Do you have the details?
So their money is being used for only the unincorporated areas, businesses in the unincorporated area.
Okay.
Okay. And they have not released, they have, they have no, no staff report and they have nothing except for the free criteria eligibility on their website. And they say more details to come. And when we've asked them about issues, they, they, they don't exist. They disappear on us.
Okay. Let's go through this.
The lottery.
So the lottery is just exactly what the word identifies. Every application is given a number and at the end of the application process, you basically select numbers out of a hat.
So it's not first come, first served?
No, ma'am, it is not. Okay, now, as it relates to timeframe, Mayor, can I answer that question?
One and two, go.
And on page seven, you have days to deployment and then days to completion. So we look at, starting the first of July, I would say that we would give everybody at least a two-week application period. The thing that I've seen that was horrible for small business, minority businesses, the women, is that the governor's office for his small business grant program, they shut it down in the first 12 hours. And nobody could get that done in that time. That wasn't right. And I think it's really important that we spend considerable time making sure that everybody that wants to get an application in gets an application in. If they're having difficulties with language or they're having difficulties with technology, which we witnessed tonight, we're going to be there. We're going to be there on the phone. We're going to be there face-to-face with them. We're going to help people get this done and we're not going to close it down until everybody says, I'm still working on it. I need to get this done. We'll help them get it done. So that would do that. And then we could go through the process. And then shortly thereafter, what I would like to do is if it, if it meets with your pleasure, is to come back with you with all of the elements that we were confronted with. Good, bad, indifferent, get your input and get on to the next one. And if that means, Council President, a special meeting of the council, would you consider doing something like that so that we could move it on and have the community input?
Definitely.
And clearly, obviously, anybody who got a grant in round one would be taken out. And then we would have a smaller universe to choose from and try to reconfigure that second million or 1 million plus, depending on how many, how much we had left.
The next question, Mayor, was regarding employers, awardees, FTE. So Council President, that's a good question. It would, they could, they could have multiple part-time people as long as it worked up to 10 FTEs. But if you're, if you're suggesting now that it would be five employees, that would be five FTEs, but you could have, let's say, 10, maybe 15 part-time, that equals five FTE. And that number is 2,080 hours a year based upon what the average person would work. So that we could add that up and make that happen.
As to the, the next question regarding PPE, what we could do is in between, at the next meeting, depending on what happens here, we could come back and research the distribution, the purchasing and the distribution. One of the things we want to be careful of, I mean, we want to be, you know, we want to be mindful of, just off the top of my head here, is purchasing hundreds of thousands of dollars of PPE and then have a situation in which we're sitting on a stockpile. And now we've got, it's, you know, that's a very intensive thing in regard to distribution and determination of need and, and, you know, and making sure that we don't end up with a big stockpile of the stuff that we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for that could have gone to the businesses. So I think we want to be careful about, you know, buying all this material, getting it here and then figuring and then have a panic as far as how are we going to get all this out? Well, you know, so that's a consideration.
One more question. Can any of the money be spent on advertising? Can we advertise Federal Way? Take ads out in local papers that aren't necessarily in federal, like in Pierce County, Snohomish County, you know, come to Federal Way, we have these stores, we have these restaurants. Could we, could any of the money be used for that?
Essentially, marketing.
If we're advertising COVID-19 program, but if it doesn't have anything to do with COVID, no.
And I think what was really important was that there was a speaker earlier this evening that talked about a series of different sources that we could advertise in to get the word out about our grant program and disbursement there. We could pay for advertising for that. And that would be important, very important to have.
And that's a critical piece. We would go through the chamber, the mirror, Facebook, social media, Twitter. We would want to make sure that we reached everybody we could that, you know, through our own licensing to try to get the word, to get the word out to all the businesses to let them know to apply.
Also, what we can do through our database, we can shoot out letters to all of the registered businesses in Federal Way. Because it's intended to serve businesses in Federal Way. So if that is what the council wants, we can do that too.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Copeng. Actually, hold on for a second. Council President Honda, were you done?
Yes, I'm going to lose you guys all in a second, so I have to find a plugin somewhere.
Okay. Thomas, can you, or actually Bill, can you facilitate this? We'll get you. We'll get you. I got Bill and Tim. What's that?
I'm, I'm, I have a cord. I. This won't work.
Okay. I know I wanted, you know, obviously you had the situation today. We're all burning through our battery-operated devices. Councilwoman Copeng, do you have a question?
I do. And just to comment first, the hour is reminding me of our budget meetings a few years ago. And I think it's, it's timely. We started talking about the budget tonight and here we are at 11 o'clock. This is obviously a very important issue. I think, appreciate the urgency with which, Tim, you have handled this and Day. And I think that, you know, this is exactly what the council is looking for as far as getting relief to the business owners in our community as soon as possible. I think that one of the things that, that I've heard a concern about is that we are going to have an adequate outreach to, to the minority businesses within the, within the community or within the city. And what I'm hearing, the outreach will be in numerous ways, whether it's through the mirror, through the Chamber of Commerce, through the website, but also direct mail. We're actually going to mail every business owner in the, in the city, right? Have you captured all that correctly?
Yes, we can do that.
We can do that. We will.
Oh, you could, we could. Whether we do or not, I think that's a decision we still need to make. But I think the one thing that I'm, I'm hearing loud and clear is we don't want to miss somebody in the speed of doing this. But we also don't want to take so long to do it perfectly that businesses close because the help that was available couldn't get to them in time. So we've got to balance here. And I think it's certainly reassuring to know that we're casting a wide net. But getting back to lottery, want to understand, I mean, I don't play the lottery because the odds of me winning are good. When you say lottery, I got to go, ah, that, that has a, that has a connotation of I'm not going to have a great shot at this. Can you give some context on that word just so we all understand what you're talking about as far as the opportunity system is going to have if they spend the time putting together an application that they could actually get paid? What's the likelihood of that? Tim, you're on mute.
Let's look at this just for a moment, council member. I don't play, I don't gamble, so. But in this particular case, what I tried to, what we tried to do was enhance the spread. Now, what I'm hearing the council say tonight is reduce the eligible, identified eligible group from down to one through five employees and then deploy the $2 million, which based upon option two, I have to do my math real quickly, but I think that gets you closer to like maybe 32, 33% of, of the businesses in, in that eligible group.
Okay.
And that's, that's the best I can do with that.
Yeah. I think, you know, it's.
I mean, let me just stop you for a minute, sir. I mean, I, you, you could, you all could just say, look, Tim, we want to get to more, so let's, let's go 1,000. And then you're going out to 2,000. And then all of a sudden, that gets you to 40 to 45% of the total of eligible businesses. Now, the question that everybody has asked me, council member, is, is that, is that enough? Again, this is a liquidity issue, not an insolvency issue.
Right. Right. And I think in the end, we're only talking about a few thousand dollars. So it's going to help, but it's not going to solve a problem. I think that's liquidity versus the solvency. I think any solution we come up with really needs to include restaurants as much as we can though. And I think cutting it off at five would exclude a lot of restaurants. And we know the restaurants have been hit very hard. A lot of those are minority-owned too. So I think we're, we, we would turn our backs or we make an arbitrary line too low and there may be some, some, some businesses that really do need help that get overlooked. So I'd just like to be balanced in our look at, at all aspects of that. But I definitely see the, the need for us to focus on the smaller businesses in the community.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My iPad also died, so I'm using my computer here. Or that button is. So can, I assume everybody can hear, right? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You know, there's a lot that's kind of going through my head and I, I can't say that I'm a big fan of the lottery system. And you know, I think that's just going to put businesses at each other, competing to try and get these dollars. I think that kind of concerns me. And if I misunderstand that, please correct me because I want to make sure I understand fully. And what I understand is that there's going to be a full application. Tim, I love what you said, which is let's do a thorough job of making sure that every possible entity has filed and let's support them, let's work through them. through them. That's great. That's, that's commitment. And that's going above and beyond, which I think is really important. And what I understand you saying is that after that, then it's going to be a lottery system. Everybody's going to be dealt with a number and whatever numbers is picked gets however much allocation, I think is what I understand in that. But, yeah, I mean, that, that, I think that's just a concern for me. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that or not, but
I do. So the other, one of the other options that you have is a weighted formula direction. And that takes a tremendous amount of time to deploy. And I would tell you that that would probably take, we wouldn't see answers to that until the end of July, maybe 1st of August. It just takes that much longer to work to do.
Right.
Or, or, I mean, this is up to the council, or you could do a first, you know, first come, first served. This is, this is obviously a, a council decision. You could modify option two, which has been what, what's been recommended by council member, excuse me, by, by Tim Johnson. So I, I understand the heartburn about lottery. You could stick with that. You could, obviously there's other, there's other options. You could say first come, first served, or you could do the weighted option with the understanding it would take longer. It's your, and one of the things we don't want to do is, this is a policy decision by the council. And we don't, that, that this is the recommendation, but you decide.
Okay. So I think the other question I had is, is remind me is the question. Remind me, so as I understand, because I want to be really clear, because I, I know there's people that are listening and watching, as they absolutely should be, although it's 11 o'clock and, and I know that some people may be in bed by now. But the question is, is that I wanted you to kind of share a little bit more about the third party, if you took it that route. And, and before you answer that question, Tim, obviously, I understand that, gosh, if we take it in-house, we're, we're not paying the 7.5 or up to 20% of admin fees, what I understood. Plus, I think there was another, I think there was another number attached to that in addition. So whereas if you take it in-house, we eliminate those things, which I understand that. And so, but if you take it a third party, I mean, give me an example of what, what entities could do third parties? I mean, are, are there third parties? I mean, how do they deal with, with equity and, and, yeah. So maybe we can answer that. And then I have a few more other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Tim? So, council member, they, they pursue the application. We can participate in the formulation of the application, give them the information on the application, and they do all the work. They do the deployment of the grants, they do the review of the, of the grants, they deal with the contracts, and they deal with the subsequent payments. If you wanted a weighted contract, if you wanted to do a weighted formula, it would take a tremendous amount of, of weight off of city staff. It would be far, far better.
Okay. So who, who's an example that could be a third-party vendor in this type of thing?
So in working with some CDFIs, Craft Free, which is based out of Portland and offices in, throughout the Puget Sound, Evergreen Community Development Financial Institution, which is
I would say that Craft Three is the company that the other King County cities were considering working with and the entity that King County has been in discussions with. So just FYI. Because there's all these other organizations are getting it out. Go ahead, Tim.
And then there, there's a couple other nonprofit organizations, like possibly Mercy Corps, if they were being interested in pursuing that. So you have, there's, there's a variety of organizations that you, you could, you could choose from, but we, we examined what those costs would be. But they could relieve the, the pressure from city staff doing this work. A day and I have talked about this. There are still issues that we have to address, correct? Today, there are on auditing, future auditing, and any issue associated with uh
Yes. And I think even though you are giving this contract to a different company, the city is still on the hook. So if they were to give the contract that the state said, no, we're not going to reimburse this, the city is still on the hook. It's still liable because the city will not refund you.
So, so I, I would say that there's, there's benefits to, I mean, there's always, I mean, there's benefits to us, which we don't pay admin costs. And there's obviously benefits to a third party, which we're not doing the ones that are doing the heavy lifting, you know. So, so obviously, I'm, I'm hearing that some sort of interest in, in us doing it. I mean, are we prepared for it? I mean, are we ready and able to, to execute such a thing?
Tim?
Well, in answer to your question, we still have to go through some work to put together the application, get that formatted, get that taken care of, and then subsequently out the door, pursue all the ways to be able to work with others to help market that and get that word out on the street. You've gotten some indication of the different mechanisms which we would use to do that. Then again, if it's something beyond a lottery, then it's going to take a, a lot of staff time to be able to pursue that. And that would be, that would, that would change, I think, our direction on, on the way that we would, we might ask you to, to look at this. We have an option that we can do with, which is two with a lottery. If you feel something other than that, then we would come back to you with a, a different direction. But please understand this, when we were talking with contractors, vendors, they were looking at at least six to eight weeks to get the market.
Okay.
Six to eight weeks to get the market.
And how much time does
I think like, like Tim said, if you are doing lottery, if you are doing first come, first served, that is easier on the part of the staff. If you're going to do weighted average, then that is more complicated. And I think, so we may be better off with a consultant. But again, if you pick the consultant, it's also going to take a longer time, too.
Interesting. Okay. And then one of my other questions, and, and I'll, I'll take a pause too, in case anybody else has questions, Mr. Mayor. But I, I just wanted you, I just wanted to be clear. I mean, this, this is going to be, this is a big issue. It's a very sensitive time on, on a number of fronts. And talk to me about, again, a day, you, you said that based on the, the criterias from the state commerce, Department of Commerce, you know, who can apply for this again?
Anybody can apply within that is a, has a business operation in the city or federal way.
Got it.
So, but we cannot say we will give preference
Got it.
to one group over the other.
Okay. Okay. I think, okay, that's good. So this community is blessed to have many, many minority businesses. They're welcome to apply.
Yes.
And so long as they continue to meet the criterias that have been laid out.
Absolutely. Right. And if the council, when you make a motion, if you, if you're, if you're not comfortable with the lottery, you could make an amendment to option two, to make it first come, first served, or you could do the weighted, if you wanted to, if, if you wanted it more intensive, but it would take more time.
I mean, and I apologize for all my questions, Mr. Mayor, but this is a huge
That's okay.
I'm saying, thank you. And that's, I mean, have we, have we talked to some businesses and said, hey, here's what we're thinking of? What are your two cents? I mean, have we talked to the chamber? Have we talked to, just to kind of get a sense of what is the feeling of this lottery system? Here's what we're thinking. I mean, have we seen feedback on, here's the process we're, we're thinking about?
Tim?
Yeah. Thank you.
So to answer the first question, I, I talked with the chamber extensively and their, first, the number one priority was to go to businesses that have a retail or office front. That was where they felt that, that this should go. The next element associated with that, with other jurisdictions, they're all up in the air. We're the first ones out. Shoreline is trying to deploy a similar amount. And I don't see them taking into consideration the same discussion points that we are. They, they just deployed and went to a lottery.
How's that working?
You know, go ahead, Tim, answer the question.
I, I don't have an answer for you on that. The best, the next time I'll be able to, to learn more about that is when I meet with him on Friday.
Okay, I've got three more questions. Councilmember Moore, did you have any other questions?
I'll take a pause and let others chime in here. Thank you.
Council, Council President Honda.
Thank you.
I must have forgotten to put my hand down, but I, I would say that I do favor the lottery only because I think it gives us more time to get out to all of the businesses who might apply.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if we are going to go with the weighted option, I think it's going to take a lot of more time. We have to invest more time in staff. So therefore, it would delay this process. If we are going to do first come, first served option, my concern is that this will impact negatively on minority businesses due to language barriers. I am in favor of the lottery system. And if you don't like the lottery name, may I suggest to use randomly selected. Same thing, but throw out the lottery name, right?
My God, son. Yeah.
You're right.
Randomly selected. Okay. So I did some calculation. If we are going to use the randomly selected method, if we are going to divvy up the $2 million at $1,000 each, then 2,000 businesses will receive this grant, which means if we are going to give it to the businesses with five employees or less, then their chances of getting this is 40%. If we are going to include up to 10 employees, then the chances of getting this grant will be reduced to 36.42%. So it's only 4% different. Now, if we are going to give out $2.5 million and we hold back 400 some odd thousand dollars, right? If we are going to give out $2.5 million, then the art of getting that $1,000 grant will go up to, for the businesses with five employees or less, the chances go up to 50%. And then if we include the businesses with up to 10 employees, that will, the, the chances will go down to 4.5%. It's not bad. 50/50 almost. So that's my input. Thank you, Mayor.
Wow. That's really helpful. What a numbers guy. Way to go.
By the way, I'm not a math major.
Very good. And I think you're absolutely right. I think the, I think lottery sounds a bit, I, I think we would want to message that in regard to randomly selected. I think that's, that, that has the, it, it would be true if that's what the council wants to do. I like that language better. But again, it's up to you. Councilmember Coachmar, and then, actually, before we go to Councilmember Coachmar, I see this, the city attorney has his hand up. Ryan, did you want to say something as a point of order?
It's not a point of order. I guess one point that hasn't really been brought up in the discussion, we were talking about a lot of the time staff would need to take to do the weighted option, but it's not just staff, it's the applicants as well. In order to evaluate them, they're going to have to do a much more robust and laborious and frankly painstaking application, because we'll need a lot of information from them versus a lot of people probably willing just to throw their name in the hat if all they have to do is show they have a business license. So
Could be a barrier. Yeah, could be a barrier for application. Yeah.
It's a significant barrier.
Councilmember Coachmar.
Well, I think Councilmember Tran is a statistician. But hey, look, this is such a small amount of money for, my gosh, just get the money out. I, I can't, I think the lottery is going to be the, a most fair way to do it. However, you know, just get the money out. I mean, $1,000, $2,000, what, what's that going to do? How much is that going to do for it? It might help pay for their rent. But, you know, just get it out. People need help. My opinion.
Yeah, actually, there, I was talking to one major restaurateur, a, a family-owned business, and his monthly rent is $12,000 a month for his business. And that's, that's a business that we all know of. Councilmember Sephados.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Tran, for, for the numbers that you just shared with us. If we're going to be fair and equitable, one thing that I, I think it was Tran who also brought up language. So I think we also need to make sure that this reaches the people who do not speak English, who, English is not their major language. So whatever we use, especially if we're going to send out letters, we want to make sure that they can read it. And one thing that I know has, I've seen in the past is if you speak this language, you know, from the get-go, and their own written language, on the cover, not on the back, because they would know to go to the back, is saying either call this number or whatever the message is, rather than trying to translate into multiple languages. That way then whatever is applicable to them, they can either call or reach out for assistance. And I don't know if we use the language bank or any type of language assistance, but that would be a, a good way to reach minority
Okay.
businesses that are also, speak other languages.
Okay. All right. I don't see any more hands up. Council President Honda, do you have a motion? Or do you have another question?
My, my question was that I think we should go ahead with the motion.
Okay, great. Awesome. So, please.
Okay. So I move to authorize staff to implement the CARES Act allocation option two as presented, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million for the city's general budget and to direct staff to take all steps necessary to encourage reimbursement through the state for COVID-19-related expenditures.
Is there, there's been a motion, a second? Is there any further discussion? Our hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tim, for your great work. Thank you, Ade, for your, for your, all the, and, and Ryan as well. Let's move on to the next item. It's the last item of business, item eight, ordinances, first reading. We've got Council Bill 778, an ordinance establishing
Mayor, mayor, I, mayor?
Yes.
We had an added item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you know what? I, I know. That's what happens with these. I'm sorry, you guys. Item, you know, and I even had it written there, written down. I'm sorry. Item B. Actually, this was, this motion was made by Councilmember Berusso. We even talked about it earlier today, Greg.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Berusso, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to be clear in my thoughts, I prepared a statement to read. So I know this is a long night, and I appreciate everyone to listen to me. So I try to get this through. So for weeks now, since the coronavirus began, I often add, stay safe, to the bottom of my emails, coworkers, friends, and colleagues. Before this census homicide, Mr. George Floyd, I've always made sure that the addition of that instruction, whenever a member of my family leaves the house, is verbally repeated. Because of our current time in history, that warning has become even more widespread and it's used throughout many homes, especially for those of color. American history sometimes has a way of becoming relegated, and sometimes historians don't always get it right. Not because they didn't get the correct information, but many times because of the lack of understanding of who they're researching, not taking time to really see the rich history of their subject. When I was in grade school, I remember a history lesson where the textbook stated that Philippine Independence Day was July 4th. Philippine Independence Day is June 12th, last Friday, commemorating the Philippine independence from Spain in 1898. I say this because we here today have a chance to write our own history, not dependent on others to get it right. A few council meetings ago, during my report, I stated that the citizens and residents of our city are the hearts and we are the voices of federal way. I agree with all of you that we are I agree with all of you that we are and will continue to be the voices for all that live here in our city. But we must really be the voice and not just a whisper. As city leaders, we are the voices for the George Floyds, the Almond Arberries, Breonna Taylors, Eric Gartners, Emmanuel Ellis's and the Richard Brooks. As city leaders, we are the voices for the John Connys, the Howard Bookers and the Roger Freemans. As city leaders, we are the voices for our LGBTQ+, our business operators, our church leaders, our first responders, healthcare workers, but most importantly, our children. We owe it to our children that hate crimes and actions because of fear, racism never happen again. Actions such as Executive Order 9066, the internment of Japanese Americans during World War II, expulsion of Chinese from Tacoma in 1885, expulsion of the Choctaw, Greeks, Choctaw, Cherokee nations under the 1830 Indian Removal Act, and the Tulsa, Oklahoma race massacre in 1921. It's ironic that tonight we've reclaimed June 15th to June 21st as Juneteenth week, only because I'm asking that we recognize our citizens' struggle to end systematic racism and discrimination. Juneteenth represents the joy of freedom and the chance for a new beginning. The recognition that Black Lives Matter is not used as a symbol, as a symbol of color or political connotation, but more of a tool to unite and bring healing to not just our community, but as we have seen these past few weeks, communities around the world. As we all boast of the city of diversity and how many languages are spoken in our schools, we have to stand up, not just for some, not just for some, but for others too. Aggression mirrors head many times in silence. Like the coronavirus, unchecked aggression has potential to spread widely. If we truly want to create and sustain something that we never had before, then we need to be willing to do things that we've never done before. With this, I ask council support, council support to recognition that Black Lives Matter and with that, recognize on the council's Facebook webpage, doing this will send a powerful message to all that we do not tolerate or disregard racism, discrimination, hate and oppression in our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And Greg, could you do me a favor?
Specifically the language again.
That's right. It's jinx. Greg, can you please state the, the motion? I should have, I should have asked that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is that the council support, support the recognition that Black Lives Matter and with this be recognized on the city, on the council's webpage, Facebook webpage.
Okay. Okay, that's, that motion has been made, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on that about a, that this, that the recognition that Black Lives Matter appear on the Facebook page of the city council? Is there any discussion on that?
I think.
Me actually.
Yeah.
Councilmember Copang, go ahead.
Yeah, I, thank you. I just want to be very clear, in our language, Black Lives Matter, that's clear. I don't think anybody's arguing that. What I don't want to do is engage in the same type of partisan politics that the Republicans were accused of in the parking lot of our city hall by promoting a partisan group. I think that we can make a statement about Black Lives Mattering, that Black Lives Matter without specifically referencing the group Black Lives Matter.
Okay, and I, actually I'm, I do have a number of hands raised. Councilmember Coachmar.
Thank you very much. I sign with that, but the, there is, with regards to the group in front of city hall that was not put on by a Republican organization, that was put on by a church, a Ukrainian church, many of whom don't speak English. They have very strong ideas and ideals, as do many other members of our community. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
I, I see our city attorney, Ryan Call, has his hand up. And Ryan, in the future, just, please just interject, but go ahead, your, your hand is up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor, that's, that's from last time. That's me not knowing how to use the stupid hand function. I'll just.
Put, put your hand, I'm, I'm kidding, it's, it's late.
My mistake.
Okay, got it, thank you. That's good, because our city attorney has a question that concerns me. Council President Honda?
Excuse, yes?
Your hand was up?
Oh, not this time, maybe a little.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Sephedos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Greg, for proposing this. And Mark, to the statement that you just made, I, I hope and believe that people understand that Black Lives Matter, but they don't. And so thank you for making that statement, and, and I, I love to hear that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So thank you for making that statement and to know that we're on the same page, but I really think a lot of people don't see it the way we're, we're seeing it or talking about it. And so why are we asking for Black Lives Matter banner or, or flag? Is because we can't say all lives matter until we acknowledge and say Black Lives Matter. For a lot of people, it doesn't mean anything. It just, they just see it as something contentious. But for us, for me, with three black sons, it means we're talking about historical and, and systemic racism that has plagued our, our nation. And so we're really talking about equity here, we're talking about social justice. And so the fact that, you know, all the names that Greg mentioned and that he listed are important, those are lives that do matter. And so we're just saying, let's acknowledge that there is an equity issue. Let's acknowledge that these people, the lives that were lost should not have happened. They were already considered guilty before they even, they even had trial. And so people are crying out, we're crying out, we're asking to say, let's acknowledge, let's say that people matter. When we, when, when, when people are screaming and shouting and help, asking for help, let's not just turn our back because we assume it means something that it doesn't. It doesn't mean that other lives and all lives don't matter. It doesn't mean that police are bad people. It just means that our lives matter and we want to be heard. And we want the city leadership to acknowledge and to recognize that and say something and step up. So this gesture that we're asking for is not a full stop to a sentence, but it's really a comma to something else that we need to continue doing, moving forward. We can't stop, it's, the banner, the flag is, is a symbol, a one-time thing. The rest of what we're going to do should follow. We should have something in place that does follow, that does support, that does acknowledge the inequity that we're experiencing. And so I, I would like to ask each council member, we are in leadership, we have a sphere of influence, and so how are we showing up for the people who are crying out louder than ever? Not just in federal way, we, I mean, there's unrest because now trust is lost, trust has been broken. So as leaders, please let us not miss this opportunity to, to listen to people's outcry, the pain and the suffering that has been going on for ages. Let's not continue this, let's not perpetuate. And again, I would say, I'm not saying and we're not saying all lives don't matter or other lives, and it's not about discrediting police because we do need police, we need to be side by side with them, we acknowledge that. But we're just saying the time is now and here, and let's not miss out on a good opportunity to be in solidarity with the people who are crying loud and clear to what is needed. And I personally am one of those, because again, I do have three sons who could be tomorrow, I may wake up to bad news and for nothing that they have done, but just because of the systemic untrust and issues. Okay, yeah, so I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lydia, thank you. Councilmember Copang, did you have a, you know, I've got Councilmember Tran next, but I see that, you know, there was some interaction there. So why don't we go back to Councilmember Copang? And then we'll go to.
I, I think, again, I think, I know that the council's unanimous in that we believe that Black Lives Matter. And I really think of Black Lives Matter as being an inclusive statement that incorporates everybody. It's not exclusive. It's not pushing other people out and saying only Black Lives Matter. I think that it's very clear, Black Lives Matter, and we need to make that statement. What I don't want to do is corrupt a, a statement of fact that we all support and believe in a community that is divided by picking a side in that statement. And so rather than putting the Black Lives Matter logo up and with that, bringing in the political issues, the political points, whether it's defunding the police or whatever, and basically inflaming divisions within our community to say, here we are as leaders of this community, we're picking a middle road here. We're picking a middle road of, as a council, we all agree, Black Lives Matter. And leave it at that, and have that be a statement that we own, that we believe, that if there's anybody in this community that doesn't agree with that statement, I'm sorry, they're behind the times, Black Lives Matter. But for us to create a political issue out of a statement that really is born out of a desire to bring our community together, to bring healing and bring the dialogue that we need to actually have a, a unifying force within our, our community instead of this division that keeps popping up, I think we've got to be very careful about how we message this. So I, I would just, I would encourage some modulation in that we are careful to choose words that respect the council as a whole, but also recognize the disparity of opinion within our community on the surrounding issues, not on the core issue that Black Lives Matter. So that's why I'm, I would like to depoliticize it. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Actually, can I respond to that quickly?
Of course, yes.
I, I personally am not politicizing it. I'm just saying it's been going on for too long, and we need to face it and address it.
Lydia, I, no, no one said you were politicizing this. What I'm saying is there's a politicization that can happen if you use a specific logo. All I'm saying is we all agree, Black Lives Matter. I believe we all agree, Black Lives Matter. I can't speak with the council, I think we do, based on my conversations. That's the point.
Okay, thank you. I think those clarifications are important. Councilmember Tran, and then Council President Honda. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all the council, council members that willing to share your perspective on this. The way that, that my opinion about this banner to be put on the council webpage is that, to me, this is not a, a political statement. It's not. But it is a statement of support to our black brothers and sisters who experience a greater degree of racism, and that is the fact. So to me, this is not politic, this is not political, this is not trying to divide the community. This is simply to acknowledge and to show our support to our brothers and sisters. This is a first step. There, there need to be more that we need to do to address this issue. But this is the first important step that we need to take today. And then hopefully in the future, we'll have more conversation, dialogue to really take a good look at what can we do to address this, this problem. So I am in support of this, and I appreciate Councilmember Berusso for making this, this motion. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Council President Honda?
Thank you. So I have a couple of things. First, I wanted, I didn't hear what, I can't think of his name, from AWC said as I was driving here to join the meeting about equity and diversity training. It's something that we've been talking about for, since last summer, last, last fall, and we needed to get through the election process last fall and then get through the, the new year, get to January, get through with the regular retreat and then do the equity and diversity training. And we haven't gotten there yet because we have a pandemic on our hands and haven't been able to meet as a group, and it's something that we need to do face to face, not over Zoom. So that will happen. If AWC is offering that next week at the annual conference, it might be worthwhile for everyone to take. I don't know if they're offering that, because I don't know what he said. So what I want to ask is, this might be a Ryan question. Do we need to agree on the complete statement right now? Or can we agree that we're going to have in the statement that Black Lives Matter and then work on it?
Well, I guess it depends on what you're trying to accomplish tonight. So if you're trying to give staff direction to do something, we need a vote on a statement. If you want to work on a statement and come back and then reach a consensus in another meeting, you can do that, but.
Couldn't you have?
You can't reach a consensus outside of this meeting.
Well, couldn't you have, but couldn't you essentially delegate that the deputy, excuse me, the council president along with their assistant, Jerry Lynn, with, you know, because I think the motion was to have a statement on there that, that was supportive of Black Lives Matter and a general support, and they could work out the, I mean, you wouldn't have council signing off on that, but, but you would have essentially general agreement for the proposition that a statement be made of a general nature to be determined by the council president and Jerry Lynn that the council supports that proposition.
Sure, that could be, that could be a motion, but I don't believe that's the motion that's on the floor.
Isn't it though?
No.
What was the, was the exact motion? Greg, what was your motion? Or actually Stephanie, did, do we have it written down?
Well, what I wrote, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Berusso, the motion is that council support the recognition of Black Lives Matter by putting it on the council member's Facebook page.
And I'd like to make a friendly, I'll make a friendly amendment to that motion to include the words as determined by the council president along with her assistant to provide the appropriate wording.
Is a motion to amend on the floor?
I'll second that.
It's just, it's a friendly amendment. Councilmember Berusso, do you accept the friendly amendment?
That's, there needs to be a second and a vote.
Okay, there was a second. So the amendment to the motion essentially was that, as I, as I was suggesting, that the exact wording be left to the council president and, and Jerry Lynn. Is there a discussion on that amendment? All right, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
No, there's discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, let's, let's stop. Let's, let's, let's not cast that vote. Council President Honda?
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Berusso.
Councilmember Berusso.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Council President Honda, so really what we're talking about here is what I was envisioning, and I think that some of us are, are kind of disagreeing on the semantics and was looking for the meaning. It's not being put on the webpage to talk about color, to talk about, let's just say it, talk about defunding, talk about reform, talk about anything else. It is there to support and just to say that we understand that Black Lives Matter. It's just a simple statement. It's not, that can't, it doesn't, don't read into a lot of things. That's all it really is. And whether it be a statement, whether it be a placard, for lack of a better word, that's all it is, and that's all I was looking for.
And that, that was.
That's fine, I'm just looking for, to get from, it's almost midnight. I'm just looking to get something that we can move on with and, and go on with the rest of the meeting so that, and I know we're all tired, so if that's, if that's. the, the, the sentence that you're looking for, then let's, that, let's vote on, vote on it. I don't necessarily want to. I, I just wanted to get, get moving on this because I think the more we talk about it, the, the less productive we're getting at this point.
The, the problem is, is that, okay. So, so you want to, you want to draft the statement right now and have the council vote on the exact statement? I mean, I, we're trying to give you a little bit of latitude so you can like add a the or, or, or add a little bit of language. Yeah.
Exactly. But I don't want to, this was Councilmember Berusso's idea. I don't want to take it away from him. If that's the statement that he wants to, us to vote on, I, or
You're right. You're right. You're right. Councilmember Berusso, what's your pleasure?
I would like to just, black lives matter.
So Mayor, just to be clear, there's a, I believe there's a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
There is.
If Councilmember Coach Mar wants to withdraw that, she may get her pleasure, but it's out of the, Mr. Brett.
Hey, I withdraw that motion. If we're all happy, let's move forward. Thank you.
And the second is withdrawn as well? Okay. All right. Uh, the motion and the second, we're both withdrawn. We're down to the main motion, uh, a statement of black lives matter, um, uh, in that exact language. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah. Well, I, I certainly appreciate this conversation and, and, um, Councilmember Safadass, thank you for your, um, heartfelt comments, um, as well as, uh, Councilmember Russo, thank you for your leadership and, and leading in this. And, um, I, I, I think, uh, this is a journey. And it's a journey of, of recognizing, uh, the community that we all live in. And I think we have to honor that. And, um, I know that I'm on a journey to, to learn. I'm not an expert. And you know, I, I've, um, begun, actually my wife and I finished watching, um, 13th. And, um, uh, and you know, I've, I've also, uh, uh, you know, appreciate, uh, the CEO of AWC, uh, sharing that there's a, a race and equity training workshop, uh, I believe this Thursday, my memory is kind of going here, but, um, and so I, I appreciate those opportunities. I, I know that, um, I'll be, um, working with, um, uh, I know that I'll be headed to a workshop and, and a training, uh, on that topic. And, and I know that's, uh, uh, that's being put together right now. Um, and so, uh, really speaking for myself, you know, I, I'm in a journey of, of learning and, um, and acknowledging, uh, what, uh, has been in our place, um, systemically in our history of the United States. Um, and if you haven't watched 13th, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an eye opener. Um, it's an eye opener. And so, uh, there's a lot of, of work ahead of us. And there is, uh, we have to, I, I agree, Councilmember Safadass, in that we do have to acknowledge that, hey, um, black lives matter because they're the ones that are systemically have, uh, had oppression and there, uh, have had hardships, um, uh, for years and years and years. And, and so we can always do better. You guys have heard me talking about continuous improvements and I'm committed to ensuring that city hall is, um, you know, continuing to improve its processes. You know, I know that I've talked to some and ideas are already flowing, um, and I'm grateful to be a part of those conversations. And, uh, I am, I am indeed grateful for the work that, um, uh, our men and women are, are doing in our police department. And, uh, I believe, um, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions and that's our job as, as the top policymakers in the city of federal ways to ask those tough, uncomfortable questions, um, uh, so that we can all do, uh, so that we can all do, uh, a, a, a better job of ensuring that city hall is equitable and accessible and welcome to all human beings, black minorities, uh, everybody, uh, that, that is our objective. But you know, I, I also have to acknowledge that our number one priority in addition to that is making sure that our community is safe. Uh, and so I'm eager, uh, and looking forward to, as we prepare for our budget, uh, to be discussing, uh, what does our budget look like in the next two years? And so, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I hope you know that, that I think, uh, that, um, we're eager for change, uh, we're eager for improvements. And, um, and so, uh, Councilmember Berusso, um, thank you. Thank you for your leadership on this. Uh, thank you for putting this, I, I definitely support, uh, this matter. Um, and I appreciated the names that you mentioned, that, that obviously one of them is, is very close to, to my heart, always has been and will continue. Um, and so, um, I, I just appreciate this dialogue and I think, um, you know, I'll, I'll definitely be voting yes on this.
Okay. Any, anything else in far as discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the main motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. All right. Item eight, ordinances, first reading. Council Bill, uh, seven, seven, eight, ordinances establishing the mayor's emergency powers. Uh, uh, staff report for Adele. Adele, you still there?
I'm here.
Our Assistant City Attorney? All right. Let's, uh, talk fast, brother.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Dale Cold. I'm, uh, the new Assistant City Attorney. This is my first ordinance presentation. Hopefully it'll be clear and helpful and I'll, uh, try to keep it short due to the lateness of the hour. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Let's see, um, that's not giving me PowerPoint here as an option.
Tell maybe just, uh, try sharing the whole screen? If you've got PowerPoint loaded up.
How's that?
Okay. There you go.
Perfect.
Yes. Kent?
All right. Uh, recent events in the city and country, um, have raised questions about the legal ability of city government to take quick and decisive action in the event of a fast-moving emergency. These events exposed a gap in the federal way revised code. Unlike many other cities in our region, the mayor currently lacks the explicit authority to take emergency actions to protect life and liberty. We know human history is marked by what Nassim Taleb would call black swan events. These are hard to predict, high-impact events, catch people off guard. And we know these events happen. We just don't know when they will happen or exactly what form they will take. Uh, the proposed ordinance would give the mayor authority that's generally equivalent to that enjoyed by the mayors of cities like Bellevue, Auburn and Tacoma. Like those mayors, the, uh, exercise of the proposed emergency powers would be subject to council ratification or modification. So the ordinance would add a new chapter to the revised code and allows the mayor to make temporary emergency proclamations. Uh, they could be natural disasters, volcanic eruptions, dirty bomb in Tacoma Harbor. Uh, we added also pathogens such as a highly contagious virus from a bat. Uh, and you could also have civil unrest such as, uh, looting or burning of public and private property. Here are some examples of the types of emergency orders that would be allowed. Curfews, they could be for part of the city, uh, for the entire city, specific hours or exceptions for essential workers, essential activities. Uh, you could also have evacuation of part of the city, an area flooding, uh, some other, uh, emergency event. The ordinance would allow the mayor to ban the sale of alcohol, uh, or gasoline. Gasoline in particular would be used for, you know, making molotov cocktails or incendiary devices. Uh, there are exceptions for gas pumped into gas tanks or heating oil, uh, pumped into home, uh, heating oil tanks or business, uh, tanks. Uh, there will also be the, a ban on possession of items you might call street weapons, things that by themselves and non-urgent times would be legal to possess, like a crowbar or rocks or bricks. But you know, in, in the case of civil unrest, you wouldn't want people running around with a backpack full of bricks, um, on the street. There is a carve-out for lawful concealed pistol license holders and people who are otherwise legally allowed to possess firearms in their home or business. This is important because under state, state law, uh, they preempt the field of firearms regulation and it would probably be illegal for the city to restrict those rights. Importantly, all orders would be subject to council ratification or modification at the next council meeting. It provides for succession in case the mayor is unavailable for whatever reason, power would then next flow to the council president. Or if the council president was unavailable, the longest-serving council member. Uh, the ordinance also requires the mayor to publicize his or her proclamations. Finally, uh, importantly, the ordinance provides for an enforcement mechanism. This is a really important tool to have in a toolbox. A violation of the mayor's order would potentially be punishable as a misdemeanor. And that would apply also to other city officials who are trying to enforce the mayor's order. All right. I think that's it. Any questions from anybody?
Let's see. Can I, Councilor Tran, did you have a question?
Oh, no. Sorry. I forgot to lower my
Okay. Councilor Coach Mar, do you have a question?
Real quick, um, the, uh, part, will you go back to the last, um, slide where you talk about succession?
Yeah. You know, the, 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 for some reason my PowerPoint is frozen up.
Oh, that's okay.
I can, uh, I can discuss that. I have a copy of the ordinance right here if you want to.
Sure. Um, you know, when I was in Washington DC at one point, um, lobbying for the city during the nine 11, uh, crisis, um, there was a, a, a point in time where all of Congress could have been incapacitated. In other words,
Yes.
They would not have been able to vote because they may have all been either in the, uh, hospital or unable to vote. So I, I, I don't know if we need to make any, um, so that the budget can be passed. I don't know if we need to make, I know you're talking about succession. One question I would have would be, is that just, um, longest-serving, uh, council member in one continuous, because some, some council members come and go. So, uh, cumulatively or in just one succession? So maybe you need to make that clear. And then second, um, just to make sure that we're able, that we have a majority to be able to vote. You know, would that be the majority of whomever is alive? Would that be the majority of whomever was capable? Uh, you know, would we be able to vote as we do now remotely? I mean, I, I don't know how that would look. Just questions because I was, saw those problems coming up during nine 11.
Sure. No, it's, uh, I, I think the first one is a one of interpretation. Um, you know, off the cuff, my, I think the simplest interpretation would be serving at that go, uh, in that particular, you know, in that, in, in, in an uninterrupted manner.
And sure, maybe you need to, maybe you need to put that in there. So the question doesn't come up.
Okay. I suppose that would be something that could be subject to amendment or we could, we could rewrite that. I think the other point is simply to have the ability to, uh, have succession to more than one person in case there's a catastrophic event that knocks out multiple members of the city council. Obviously if no one in the city council is available, then there's nobody to exercise emergency powers. But you know, hopefully that would be an extremely rare circumstance. I modeled this on Bellevue's city ordinance, uh, and they had a three-step succession. It went from the mayor to the deputy mayor and then, oh, I'm remembering the, forgetting the third person, but they were all elected officials. And I'm sorry, I forgot your second question. Uh, oh, the second one was, uh, regarding quorum. I think this isn't necessarily designed to deal with the issue of whether a quorum could be pulled together for the city council. It's just who could issue the initial emergency proclamations that would then have the force of law?
Okay. Well, if we're clear on that, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to have clarity and, and perhaps we can reiterate that as time goes on.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Coach Mar, um, this is Ryan. I think it's very easy. We can all, we do sometimes make modifications between first and second reading. So if council passes this on to second reading, we could easily put, insert the word, uh, uninterrupted for in front of longest-serving council member just to, I think you're right. We should, why not answer that question upfront?
Yeah. I, I just think it's clarity is good. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Copeng? Councilmember Copeng?
I have no comment.
Okay. Councilmember Berusso?
Oh, yes. Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, thank you Dale for that. Um, I had a question probably just for me for another time, uh, not through the ordinance, but for succession, um, and if you're incapacitated or anyone else like that. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, council is up to speed on DOC, emergency management in a way, uh, to make sure that those decisions can be made and to be able to make those decisions, uh, training has to come with that. So I know that, uh, a bunch of times coming up, Mr. Mayor, and I think things are coming, but I know that, um, serving some of those that we all have to be, uh, trained up to a certain point to be able to take that seat if you're not there. So, um, just
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. If we have to go to Emmonsburg, then we need to go to Emmonsburg. I guess that's what I was kind of asking.
Spoken as a true firefighter. Uh, you're absolutely right. You gotta be, gotta be prepared and, and I think you're absolutely right. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Church. Okay. Uh, do we have any citizen comment? Oh, Council President Honda? Council President Honda?
Yes. Thank you. How soon would the council need to ratify this and what would happen if they did not ratify, uh, the mayor having, wanting emergency powers here?
You mean in the event that, if, in the event that this passes and then at some point I, you know, would, the mayor, whoever it is at the time sets like a curfew or a street, wouldn't it be that, Dale? What's the answer to that?
Yeah. It's a, it's a fair question. So it would be at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
And it, uh, would be then be presented to the city council for ratification, confirmation, modification or rejection. And if not so ratified and confirmed, shall be void. So if you choose not to act at the next council meeting, the, uh, emergency proclamations would cease. Any action taken prior to that would still be valid, but as of that meeting, if no action were taken, it's done.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. And it would, it could be ratified by a simple majority vote?
It doesn't specify that, but yes, I think if as long as there was a quorum for council action, that would be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Was there anybody else? All right. Is there any, uh, citizen comment? Stephanie, do we have anybody on the line?
No, Mayor, I don't have any citizen comment.
Is there anybody in federalway that's awake? Okay.
I'm ready.
All right. Actually, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Oh, that's right.
Council Bill seven, seventy-eight, ordinance establishing the mayor's emergency powers and ordinance of the city of Federalway, Washington relating to the mayor's emergency powers, adding a new chapter two point zero nine to the federalway revised code, including two point zero nine zero one zero, two point zero nine zero one one, two point zero nine zero one two and two point zero nine zero one three.
Okay. Uh, Council President Honda?
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the July seventh, twenty twenty council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any, uh, other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mayor passes. Thank you. Council reports. Councilmember Coach Mar.
Hey, no report. Let's go home. That's funny.
Councilmember Moore?
Well, I actually brought my handy dandy binder. I wanted to start reading page one of the three hundred and sixty-five. No, I'm just kidding. Um, I, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, I, I just wanted to say thank you for, thank you for this conversation that we just took on the whole Black Lives Matter, I can't stress how important that was. I'm looking forward to the community beginning to see that, hey, we recognize, we see you, and we're moving forward. And I do want to just kind of recommend that the next million dollars of CARE Act that we are looking to pass, maybe we can try and do that earlier in the, in the meeting, because I know we kind of discussed it at about 11 o'clock or something like that, and I understand there was a lot of public comments and whatnot, but, so just, obviously, financial matters, I'd like the idea of discussing it earlier in the meeting. But, other than that, that's just feedback. Other than that, can't think of anything else, so, yeah, that'll be the end of my report, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Copeng?
I too wanted to thank the council for a good discussion. I think we had, we've got some issues that we're working through, and I think the CARES Act is, it's, it's going to help some people, but I think doing that right is important, and, I mean, the staff did a great job, but I think, you know, in particular, I really appreciate the, the conversation with the council, and obviously with Councilmember Berusso's motion, I think, I, I'm proud to be a part of this council in that we can, we can move forward together and, I think, lead the way for our community toward unity, toward, toward, I mean, I think, understanding our humanity is, is universal. How we approach life is based on, on so many different things, ethnicity is one of them, but, you know, we, we are, we have so much in common, and we live in a great city, and I'm honored to serve with each one of you, and I'm proud of our city, and the way that we've responded in the midst of all this, I think, you know, it's, nothing's perfect, but I, I'm proud of our city, and I'm proud of our council. So, thank you, I appreciate the honor to serve, an honor to serve.
Well said, sir. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor, it's like, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berusso?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank everyone, staff, for this. I also didn't have a chance to congratulate Councilmember Coachmar, Safadass, and Moore on their achievements, I know that was a big thing, and I know that you worked hard, and thank you for doing that. I just want to say thank you to all the council members, Mayor, and everyone to support the motion I was putting, trying to get through, and to, to just give the meaning, you know, it's more of the meaning to me, it wasn't, again, we had to take all the, any political connotations out of it, any color connotations out of it, and I just, I'm just proud that we worked it through and that, that we're, you know, we also, a lot of us sometimes wear our hearts on our sleeves, and, but, at times, it shows that people can work together to a common goal, and thank you, and thank you, Mark, for saying that, I am also proud of being on this council, so, and that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Safadass?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Greg, for the, for the motion, and for your leadership in that. It's something that I've struggled with, and I'm happy that this was passed unanimously, and so I just want to say thank you to all council members who did lend your support, and I hope we have these difficult conversations continue to have them, because people are going to ask, people are going to wonder why we even voted on this or why it's important, but it's important, and so we have to have a common language that we could all use to say why it's important. It's not only important to me because I'm black, it's important to my community, and so, thank you very much, and like I said earlier, this is just a symbol, but let's, let's actually act on it and have plans in place so we could all have what it takes for us to take it to the next level. And so, I really appreciate everyone, thank you so much, and good night.
All right, Council President Honda?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Thomas and Jerry Lynn for getting me to the meeting tonight. I know I wasn't the only one that was having issues, and I'm glad that I lived close enough that I could be here as quickly as I got here. I'd also like to say that I'd like to thank, thank the police department for what they do, and that I support them, and pray that they go home at the end of their shift to their families. And I'm going to read the two paragraphs that we read all together on the proclamation tonight as my last thing because I think they say a lot, and I think Federal Way, as well as other cities, are going through a really tough time now between the pandemic, people being out of work, all the issues that are going on, I think this says a lot, so. From this moment forward, the Federal Way community is determined to join together to wrap each other in a spirit of love, striving to make life in our community and our world better for all, and together we embrace the past as well as the future that only unity, respect, and appreciation can bring. Good night.
Good night, everybody. Great job, I'm really proud of you. I'm proud to serve with you. All right, great job, everybody, I think this is probably close to a record for the lengthiest meeting, but we got a lot done tonight, I'm proud to work with you. Have a great night, everybody, we are adjourned.
Thank you, man, thank you, Mayor.